March 2012, City Council Work Session to Order. Madam Clerk, we call the roll please.
Ms. Mayor Davis is present. And then we have Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One. Councilmember Jim Iyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
Here.
Um, open remarks. It's nice to be able to meet somewhere. Although our next, just want to say this, and this is final. I've got the next meeting in place, we'll have it and all that.
Yes, at the Path Academy.
We're going to have a City Council meeting at six o'clock, starting next Tuesday, not this, 26th, two weeks from now, for a council meeting. We're going to start a little bit earlier because I've worked on this for a few weeks now. Superintendent Thurman is going to be presenting at the, after the council meeting at seven o'clock. Give 15 minutes or so to present, and then 15, 20 minutes for questions from the audience, from people about this, you know, the state of our school system in DeKalb County. They're going to have, we're still working on other people to attend, but we'd like to have Representative Tom Taylor, Representative Jacobs, and maybe Senator Mallar come and update us on the status of the bill moving to the legislature about possibility of school systems starting up in cities. And maybe hear from somebody that Deloitte Home is associated as well, because they have helped start that 501(c)(3) in Deloitte about education. So, that'll be a good time for everybody. We'll have our council meeting running from six to seven, and we'll have Michael Thurman, and he can answer questions, and he can leave if he needs to. Then we'll get into other discussions about future options. We just want to follow this. We don't have any plans in place to do anything here in Brookhaven yet with schools, not under our jurisdiction. But we're following and tracking what's going on in other jurisdictions that put in legislature, and we think it behooves us to have some, an informational session and let, give residents a chance to speak themselves, so we can start hearing the pulse of the community on this issue. So that'll be the next council meeting we have. It's at the Path Academy, which is kind of adjacent to near the Costco on Hermance, but behind Overlord University and just north of, south of Windsor Parkway. It's a DeKalb County public school, it's kind of hidden away. So, but it's a lot of, lot of finance between Peachtree and Windsor Parkway. And Maggie, can you sit down with Rebecca, too?
Okay.
All right. Review of the agenda. I guess we can just start right in, the agenda items.
Ms. Mayor, in the review of the agenda, there are a couple of items that I do want to add to that when we get into the other business, Construction Board of Appeals, the brokerage firm, the budget, and the benefits package, which is on the council agenda for tonight.
All right. Well, the benefits package is going to be on there tonight, on the agenda tonight?
Well, it's on there right now, but it's under consent agenda. Mr. Pike is here, and he was going to present that. If you all are wanting to wait another two weeks, we can do that. But since he's here, I thought it would be good to just go ahead and give an overview of that.
All right.
Oh, and one more thing. We have it under the intergovernmental agreements. You'll be hearing from the city attorney on police, and then I'll be talking, he and I both will be talking about parks and rent as well.
All right. Let's go with this, I guess the first thing would be the number one here.
Yes.
Consideration of ordinance, amend the charter for the purposes required, because this is, this is so we don't have to keep saying first reads, every read, all that stuff.
That's correct. This, we can do this by home rule. And there's, there's a, we have to, there's an advertising requirement that we'll have to advertise in the paper. And then we have to have, we'll have to have two different votes on it. You have to have two successive votes, two successive meetings to have votes, and the affirmative to pass it. But we could go ahead and change it to a one read. It's a, it's circly is going to simplify all your community development issues instead of having a two read on that. And it gives you more flexibility. The only concern that you ever have in really a one read ordinance is the ability to vet an ordinance. But because you've set up work sessions that are, that predate your regular voting session by two weeks, what you've set yourself up is, is really to have that, basically, that first read, basically the work session. You work out all the issues that you want to on that work session issue, and then you come directly to a vote on this, on the two weeks later, so.
So, I understand the pros to this. What are any possible cons?
Well, the cons are, basically, that you don't have a vetting, a public vetting process, and that people, that you want to have a, more notice to those. But as we've set, as you've set up a process where you're going to bring them to a work session in the first place, you cover that vetting process. And oftentimes, oftentimes, even on a consent agenda, things that you would have on consent, you'd have to bring, you'd have to bring them for two reads. And so you've overcome the basic narrative that you have of not having a two read process.
Well, one thing, if we pass this, one thing I want to make sure is that the citizenry knows, we'll post on our website, what the effect of this ordinance is, and that if they want, if they're interested in ordinances and what we're doing, they may come to work sessions as well. It can kind of drive interest to work sessions, I guess, as well. But I want to make sure people know what the effect of this is, so that we don't all of a sudden surprise people.
Sure.
We can make sure we notice that in a proper way. Any questions?
And will this be for all ordinances, certain ordinances, or what going forward?
Well, you know, we would suggest it for all of the ordinances, because you have, you have a vetting process that's out there. And if you have a, typically, in a, in a two read ordinance process, especially when there is agreement on what you want to do, you go in and you have the first read, and you sit there and you wait for two weeks later. And all you do is you read the caption, and it goes to the next calendar. And then you, and then you pass it out. And you would have to do that on any ordinance that you wanted it into a consent or otherwise.
Yeah, I don't think we've had any discussion when we've done a first read of anything. It's all the discussion prior to anyway, or, you know, or it's taken off.
Right.
So I understand that.
So your vetting process is covered on that. Your vetting process in community development, of course, is that you have a planning commission process, and you have, and then it comes to you, and you have a hearing process on that also.
Greg, or Susan, do you all have any comments on this, or, you know, what's your experience at other cities, or?
My experience has been, you know, two readings. But I can see, you know, the merit of having a one read, and especially with what Bill just said. Most of your ordinance changes are going to come from the planning side. And you've got the planning commission really to vet that for you. The idea of having the work sessions are just going to be extremely valuable for us. And my experience, many years ago, there were no work sessions. So there were council meetings, and everything was vetted out there and explained out there. And then definitely, when you have the two read program, the one read requires no action, so there is no discussion anyway.
Right.
So I don't think you're losing anything that you didn't already have.
It's making it a little more efficient possibly.
Right.
Susan, you ever come around there?
I've experienced a one read. But it's all worked out before it gets to the council meeting, and back in the work sessions.
Have you ever seen anybody come up with a comment during a two read? I mean, what's this, what's this whole vote potentially going to mitigate?
I have at the, at the second read where the adoption is. Because that's when there is discussion, and the public makes a comment. And if council finds that the comment deserves consideration, then in their motion to approve, they can approve with a certain condition, such as to modify the language.
So Bill, if something is coming up that potentially would be controversial at the request of councils, do we have the opportunity to say, we want to make this a two read?
Well.
It'll be the work session.
Yeah, well, I mean, not everybody makes it a work session.
Right.
So just to make sure there's ample time for people.
I guess we'll just pull up the agenda.
I've experienced deferring it to the next meeting.
So you still read it, but then you defer it for further consideration? Okay, that's good. Are there any ordinances, ordinance changes that are still required to have a two read, or?
No.
I guess even the planning zoning, that's more about a timing and notice issue than a two read?
It is. And you have, you know, the, that community development, planning and zoning, the only thing that you ever worry about in the two read is the vetting process. And because you have the work sessions, but because you've already noticed people about the work sessions, of course, because the committee already knows about it, you have the opportunity to get feedback. And oftentimes, between a work session, and I really think it's actually more effective, because most of the time you do a one read, and you say, okay, we're going to have, we'll bring it back for a second read. In a work session, you actually have discussion, and you work on the issues. And then by the time it comes back, it comes, it comes in a form that everybody knows where it is, and it's gotten to a place that there's probably a lot more consensus on it to bring it back to that, to that, to the session. And then people still would have, have the opportunity to vet it again. And if there's more discussion, it's the opportunity to defer. So I think you have all the options that you have, and you have the opportunity for efficiency.
Well, I'm complying to support the ordinance though, when it comes up in a couple of weeks. Anybody else, do you have any questions or thoughts on it? Unless something comes up between now and then, I'm complying to support it. If I need to, then I can have a vote. All right. Next thing, consideration of text amendment?
Yeah, we were suggesting that you add Article Five back into your multifamily housing inspection program. A copy of that should be in your packet. If you have any questions, both myself and Michael Meyer, your building official here.
All right. So it's my, the reason for that, what happened, or do they need to go into that, or?
Yeah, certainly. Really, that is the inspection program. And I think prior to your last meeting, there were sections of what you'd seen before that there was still some ongoing discussion about, so it got omitted. And now that, I think some of the councils had a chance to meet with Michael and work through some of those things, we're putting that back in there now.
Okay. So why was it removed initially?
There didn't seem to be a consensus amongst the council.
I mean, it came to us as, as an ordinance that, you know, we're going to modify it or remove it without, where did, where did that, where did that come from?
Right. Both ourselves and legal counsel that was reviewing it. Collectively, I think it got omitted through that process, and it's been brought back at this time now that we've got, hopefully, everybody on the same page.
And what is, what is the effect of this, of putting it back?
It's the tools for us to be able to do the job of inspecting the apartments and multifamily properties.
I guess it was explained to, at least to myself, as, as what we were adopting in Chapter 18 was replacing what was being removed from 15. And now, what I understand is that we need both to make it effective?
You do, yeah.
So what's the difference between these two, 15 and 18? Is there, do you know specifically, like what we did have?
As far as the difference between that and 15, there really isn't any.
Sir, we're here. Do you want to move down?
I didn't want to interrupt anybody. Oh, the only difference between that and what was in 15 was just inserting the ability to do an exterior evaluation. That's the only difference. The rest of it, all the policy and the forms and everything, we pulled that out as far as it doesn't necessarily have to be in the ordinance. We put that in there so that, for your knowledge. Well, I think the policy stuff's going to get discussed. Yeah, it is later. Yeah, yeah. This is just Article 15.
So, so we're really just talking about the code, we're not talking about the policy?
Correct, that's correct.
When will we see the revised, you said you're making changes for exterior. When will we see that revised language? Is that, is that what's in here?
I think you had the policy in another section that we were using the other day.
It's on the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. We've seen this sort of piecemeal. Can you put it together in one place so that we can, you know? I'm looking now at, at code and at reports and those types of things. I don't know that, and maybe it's in here, we just, when do you, when do you see this? Let me ask it a different way. When do you see this coming for a formal vote?
Tonight, if, sorry.
Yeah.
Article, Article Five is just the interior and the ability to do an exterior.
And that's what we'll be looking at, not the policies, right?
No policies.
But does it attach the inspection report that you have here?
No, no, that's not, that's not part of, that's not part of an ordinance. That's part of the city policy.
That'll be the next meeting.
Can I just clarify something, please, for all of you? The ordinance, you know, provides the authority to the city and directs the community development department to perform inspections to the exterior of multifamily. And then there is a requirement in the business occupation, Chris, help me if I'm getting it wrong, that requires before a business license can be issued, there has to be performance of interior inspections. Okay. So they sort of work hand in hand. Now, what you previously saw was an ordinance, and in the body of that ordinance, it included the policies and procedures, the standard operating procedures in which the department would perform the inspections. And there was some concern by some of the council members, and as well as a member of the apartment association, that the, the language and how the inspections were described was concerning. You know, that it was being looked upon as a SWAT nature. And of course, that's, you know, the furthest thing from what this approach is all about. Because all of this is about, you know, the life, safety, and welfare of the occupants that reside in these multifamily complexes. So, that evening, when you all were working on the ordinance, you know, we removed the policy, the policy procedures, the standard operating procedures is really what it is, so that staff could work on that, tone down some of that language, but not take away from the true intent. And that is to be able to go out in teams. And we had a tour last week where you all saw how large some of these complexes are. And one person out there cannot do it by themselves. And I would highly recommend that they not, because of a safety factor just for your own personnel. So there is a method in which these inspections have to be conducted. And because of the size of the development, it's been determined by the building official, does he need two or three teams? And these are teams of basically two people. And they go out and they inspect. And the landlord or the owner is allowed to come along if they want to. So what they have done is they've gone back and they have stayed true to what the intent is. They have modified the approach. There was one concern that came up from the apartment association, they didn't give enough notice. So now what we have is that there'll be a five-day notice to the landlord. So the building official.
Is that typical?
Uh, no.
What is it typically?
Twenty-four hours.
What's the reason to go from twenty-four to five days?
Just, there was concern about us not giving ample notice to the apartment.
What's the square hours of ample everywhere else?
Yes.
Well, here's, I mean, let me, let me, actually, chime in on it. My concern that, that has been, drawn to my attention is that, you know, this is really a main function of the ordinance is for life safety, safety of the structure, the safety of the inhabitants. And we have apartment community owners who want to cooperate in that, a hundred percent of the way. They're our customers as, as residents of the city of Brookhaven. We need to be responsive to make sure that we're, you know, we have a cooperative effort to address these concerns. Their concerns as well as ours. And, and at the end of the day, the most important thing I want our city to be cognizant of is that, you know, we, it's, we don't want to approach it as if we're trying to catch, you know, and I think that that was the concern of those communities. You know, I don't want us to diminish our ability to, you know, to look out for the life safety issues and code compliance of these facilities. But at the same time, it's a partnership thing. And that's, that's the reason why we want to have that advance notice. I, I don't know that it has to be five days, but twenty-four hours might be a little bit quick to be able to get somebody if they're not going to be there.
My concern with providing notice to the residents, particularly, you know, and, I mean, even going so far.
Well, that's kind of short for the residents.
Even, well, even going so far as to put door hangers on all the doors, because we have some, obviously have some apartment complexes where if a SWAT team shows up to do inspections, there's going to, well.
We have no SWAT teams.
I understand, but I mean, even.
Don't inflame the language unnecessarily.
Okay. Groups of people dressed.
Packs.
Packs, yeah, herds, packs, whatever, of people with.
Roman games of code inspection.
With armbands.
Staff has, has addressed that. And I think they've done a good job in addressing that. Because, you know, five days, you know, to meet with the landlord.
I think that's too long.
Well, I mean, if, if we're looking at a shorter time, you know, maybe three days is more appropriate, and, you know, it helps out the building official. But what we're trying to do, and what Michael has worked hard on, is, first of all, we want to make contact. This gives him the ability, whether it's twenty-four hours or seventy-two hours, to talk to the landlord on what the purpose is.
Right.
What they're going to be looking for, and, you know, what they'll be doing as a result of the inspection. Because there has to be a remedy if problems are found. So there'll be a plan that Michael will work out with that landlord to give them enough time, adequate time, to address all of these issues. In some cases, it might take nine months. It might take eight months, six months, before they can address all of the matters. And again, with what we saw just last week, I would say that's at least a year, just by itself.
Go ahead, Mike.
And if you, if you would entertain, I'm trying to talk for just a second.
Sure.
I saw the thing that you got from the apartment association. And I actually did a little bit of a response to Murray's. Because, I mean, some of the stuff, I mean, you get kind of an offhanded version of it. But, you know, I mean, one of the things that kind of concerns me about this is the apartment association is sitting back throwing these arrows at it, and they've never been on a, on an evaluation. They have never seen how we go out, do the evaluation with the apartment associate, or the apartment management, or even that, maybe that management puts a maintenance personnel. They're with us all the while, and they see what we're seeing, forming it out. And we'll even give them a copy of the hand notes if they want them, so that they can get started on it. Thirty days, we, in thirty days, we generate a report. We go back to them, sit down with the apartment management and say, "Look, this is what we found. Here are the issues." And if it's a larger complex, we try to spread out reports so that it does give them a little bit more time. Because, you know, if some of the jurisdictions look at this as, well, "This has to be done in thirty days." I mean, I've spoken with Bill Riley in regards to this. You know, our stance as, as a company, and, you know, just being good natured is, you know, is permanent, for six months. So I mean, you know, if we can work within a six-month timeframe, then let's try to do that. We can grant you an extension if you need to, or whatever.
Will you send us an email of, showing the original policy, proposed changes, and what you're, how you acted on those?
Well, see, part of the thing with the policy is, is that the policy is just set up as how we're doing the inspection. Because here's, here's one of the catch-22 in that is, you know, if you've got to go out and do an evaluation on apartment complex, you've got to have a fire inspector, who's got fire inspector certification. Okay. Okay, we need a land development person.
Not the same as the fire marshal.
No, doesn't necessarily have to be the fire marshal, fire inspection. Then we need a land development person, who's got land development certification.
All right.
Building inspector.
All right.
Code enforcement officer. So I can cover multiple disciplines. I can cover multiple disciplines, so I wouldn't necessarily have to be divided into four people.
Okay.
I would just need a teammate in order for safety.
Okay.
And, you know, all of our inspectors are qualified similarly. Maybe not all four disciplines, but we've got soil erosion, we've got building inspection, we've got code enforcement. And, you know, we've got a site development engineer that would be coming out with us.
Well, like I'm saying, can you send us an email with the proposed changes, with any commentary you might have on it, or, before the next work session? Because I guess you'll present this to the next work session, for us to vote on it at night, right?
Um, I need to clarify that, because that's where I was headed. Because this is standard operating procedures within the community development department, it never should have been included in the body of your ordinance for adoption. This is their internal standards that they work with. It's different. So it does not require approval by mayor and council. However, because there's been such interest, you know, we'd like to provide you what we've done, and what, you know, Kevin's department has done to address all of this, and we'd be happy to send that to you. And if we may, I'd like to have them send it out to you in the next day or so. And if you have any real issues or concerns, you can, you know, report back to us, if you'd copy me on that. Then if there's nothing of any concern after what he has presented, we'd like to be able to move on, so that they can, you know, start scheduling and contacting the department staff.
Well, I think the sense of the council, we've all talked separately about this.
Right.
Is that life, well, for safety.
Correct, that's the litmus test.
So, I mean, as long as that's what your procedures are focused on, I mean, we can massage the corners of it. I mean, we want to support you in your job and make it easier for you to do your job, to get more done, do it professionally, and everybody is happy, and we, our apartment, our apartment community starts to improve. Because after what we saw last, I don't know if that's the worst complex in Brookhaven. Is it?
It is.
One of them.
Probably.
So they're more than just that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's just unacceptable. And those people over there living in those conditions is extremely troubling.
And one thing I spoke with Ray about, which is that, I mean, you know, we could maybe do a training session at the apartment association.
I think that would be great.
Look, this is what we're looking at. This is why.
Right, yeah, exactly. I think that, I think that.
I would have suggested that, for sure. Talk about transparency and open see, and openness. I mean, excuse me, I'm sorry. But we should arrange a tour for those people to come and actually walk with you, and let them see what we're doing, and get them to support what we're doing and communicate to the department.
I've been doing this program for four years, and I've never seen them on a single inspection.
Well, you know.
Maybe that's a mayoral invitation.
Well, no, I, I think so. And I think that's a great thing to, to have an informational or training session to, to this community of business owners. Just so that they know where we stand, and what's important, and what we're going to be looking for. I think that for us to put notice on apartment owners would be an overly burdensome thing to put on the city. But I think that if the apartment owners would like to do that, I think that five days gives them enough notice to get their ducks in order, and be a partner with us. Because everything I've gotten from those business owners is that they do want to be a partner. If they, if they've got something that's out of code compliance, they want to address it. And, and they do want to get the criminal element. I think, you know, to create a partnership in this program with them makes it a strong program in this city, so I think it's a good. Thanks for your email and clarification of their concerns, you know, but.
Yeah, like I said, some of it's half-truths and spun funny, but.
Right.
Well, I think, I mean, I know they got, they're sort of a lobby group, too. They're not, I mean, you know, we want to make sure.
Yeah.
But I think if any rational person goes and sees what some of what we've seen, and what y'all have seen, I think it'll be, you know.
And we've had good success with it. I mean, we've seen, we've seen some complexes do a hundred-and-eighty-degree turnaround. I mean, just go from.
Exactly. And to that point, you know, there are, there are complexes within the city of Brookhaven that need a hundred-and-eighty-degree turnaround. We want to.
Three six, someone be fouled me.
We need to figure out how we, how we can get to that point. Because to have condemned properties in the city of Brookhaven creates a real safety issue. And we've got, you know, we've got to figure out how to avoid that.
Well, it also creates a game plan you'd better have in place, in case you move in that direction, especially with the larger complexes. So, I mean, it's not a very, it's, it's a very, very complex issue.
Yeah, yeah. You guys have the experience. I just want, you know, that's, that's the feedback I've gotten, is that we've got a group that wants to help partner with the city in getting this done, you know, as much as we can, you know, partner with them to do that.
And I don't disagree with that. And as a, as a property owner, I, I respect that. But, you know, at the end of the day, we've got to be driving the bus. You know, we've got to, while it's, it's good to get their input and hear their, their concerns, you know, personally, I think five days is too long. Because we have the right to inspect, to go into a complex and inspect anything without any notice. So to provide additional notice for this type of thing, you know, while I agree with it, that, you know, hey, these people are going to be here, you're going to see a concentrated effort. I think that five days, but maybe a little too long. And we need to take into consideration some of their, some of their thoughts. But at the end of the day, we've got to make sure that what's right is right. And it's the citizens, and it's the life safety issues that we really have to be most concerned about. And this is sort of making life a little easier for the, for the property owners. And this is sort of making life a little easier for the, for the property owners. But, and I, and surprised that I'm the one saying that, but I felt like it needed to be said. But question on that, you have interior and exterior inspection reports, is that policy or is that ordinance?
Both of those would be policy. So that they could be changed. I'll give you a for instance.
I was curious as to, as to what, what part of the, and, and. Being policy, I understand that they, they can be.
Well, and the only reason, because we've run into situations where some of the interior inspectors, pre-approved group, are going out. And then happenstance, we, we go behind one of them on something and go, well, you've got sprinkler heads in here that are just completely covered in paint. Let's add that to the list, you need to look at sprinkler heads, you know?
I understand.
And so, I mean, you know, I don't wanna come to you guys every, you know, sixty days and go, hey, I need to add sprinkler heads to this list.
Now, is, is the, is the report that's included in the, in what they provide us for their business license? The, you know, you've got the one page, is that policy or is that ordinance?
That's policy as well.
Okay, so we can, we can, okay.
And really from that, it's, it's their worksheet for the guys to go out. You know, I, I added the, the language of the codes that you asked me to and the information.
And, and I appreciate that, but I think we need to come up with something that's a little bit more, now go back to a worksheet that references these as specific numbers and then we can work on that.
And you know, and I think, I think, you know, I liked your idea, we could post that as for, or even hand that out to the apartment complex. This is what we're, these guys are looking at, so that they can see, okay, well, numbers have to be this size and this width and et cetera, et cetera. So they've got all that information right there in front of them. Not that they would necessarily have to use that as the worksheet, but it's, it's there for informational purposes more.
I have two questions for you. We're talking about twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours, five days. Is there a downside to doing a five-day extension versus a twenty-four hour?
I would offer one kind of, we, we try to respond to complaints that we get from a reactive code enforcement process next business day. Or sometimes even the same day. So that I think that the twenty-four hours coinciding with that policy is probably a good thing. I'm not opposed to make it in a longer period of time at all, but I think that consistency of having a twenty-four hour turnaround for, regardless of whether it's proactive or reactive, would be consistent.
But have, you have, you run into instances where that twenty-four hour notice is gonna upset the life of a resident?
And really, I mean, we're not even, we're not even dealing with residents. The interiors are done by the third party, whom the apartment association hi, or the apartment, apartment complex hires. They can direct them as to, you know, what day we want you here, what day, what time, what, you know. It's kinda like the, the one you and I were talking about and said, I'll tell them to be on the same day as the other guys, you know?
I mean, if you give them five days, this is just a thought process, you know what I mean? If they have simple things that need to be cleaned up, that makes it easier for you when you're going in, clean up the garbage along the side, take the paint off of that sprinkler head and whatever. Make sure time go through, maybe they're really, if they're really the partners that we are hoping they'll be, they'll make an effort to try and be as compliant as possible. That would be why I would be in favor of five days. Unless you're telling me there's a downside, which I'm not hearing.
Well, the only.
Well, for the downside.
Things can get covered up.
Right, I mean, five days is kinda, we don't wanna assume the worst about everybody, but to me, I know you're, but you don't wanna catch somebody, but you do wanna, wanna see what their regular practices are, you wanna give them an opportunity to change their regular condition for temporarily. And then it goes back after you leave, and you know, so it's, you, you need a little bit of element of.
The one that's jumping to my mind is, and this is a big point of contention with a lot of apartment complexes, is grills. On an apartment complex, grills are prohibited on decks. They have to be ten feet away from the structure, so you could have it stored on your deck. And if it's got a gas.
Grill with a flame or a grill period?
A grill period, a grill with a canister, a propane gas tank, has to be disconnected.
A George Foreman grill.
Those don't matter, yeah, no, this is like.
No, I mean, there, there are a lot of electric grills.
Yeah, this is like a charcoal grill or a. The gas propane tank has to be disconnected and stored by the apartment complex. And, I mean, you know, if, you know, that would, that might be one that, as you mentioned there, that they might run around and go, okay, you know, everybody get their, give me your tanks.
Do you have any stats on how many apartment fires are started by grills on decks, 'cause I'm sure that's the reason why.
I, I don't, I don't have anything at hand. It's, it's a huge problem, it's, it's been prohibited by the fire code for several years now. And even the state fire marshal came out and did a directive for the apartment association to notify that that's not, not allowed.
So that would be a downside, a valid one, a valid one at that.
That's, like I said, that's one that just jumps into my mind.
Well, and for safety reasons, I would say, well.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, to drive through a complex and go, okay, there's a grill, there's a grill, there's a grill. Okay, you guys need to tell them to get the grills out of here, and where's your, where's your container for the grill?
What about the power sharing, there's a lot of that they're going to do. Power sharing, where people are running.
Yeah, extension cords or, or the cable lines or whatnot, yeah, you run into that from time to time.
So that, too.
Cable, is one I see a lot of.
Those are, those are the five day, you know, that, that's what, and I've seen that also, that's, that's what the five day, I think that may be a little bit long.
But is the five day in the policy, is that my understanding?
I mean, I was just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to get to comfortable. Yeah, I mean, it's a policy that, that we can amend, but, you know, one of the concerns.
If you give us, maybe an email about why you think it needs to be, whatever time you think it needs to be at, you know, I think we can.
And specific examples like that, you know, quick fixes that can be covered up that, that are hazards. Your grill's a great one.
And it's not really a point of, a gotcha, a gotcha. You know, because, I mean, in the four years that we've run this program before, only one complex got a citation. Much to, you know, the dismay of them, but they were the only ones that got one. So, I mean, it's not like we're running around giving everybody citations and, I mean, you know.
When you say citation, that, that means they go to court. There's a lot of violations, but only one citation.
And the violations, I mean, it's, it's a process of working through it. I mean, if you can, if you can show me a, an action plan, I'm getting it done in a reasonable amount of time, again, six months. If you need a little longer, then we can talk about that, you show me good effort, and then.
We also need to have, and I don't know, maybe in here, I, I had a chance to read what we got today, but we also need to have those, some very specific items that are, that are critical, three to five day repair kind of stuff. And, and, you know, and if you can come up with some broad categories of, of immediate, you know, short-term, long-term kind of repair stuff, then, then I think that would be helpful also. Because it lets the apartment owners know what the critical items are, and they may be focusing on those down the road.
Well, and, and, you know, we can give some broad-based examples, but I mean, each one can be different.
I mean, you know, one of the big things that, that you showed in the book was, was all the open electrical boxes. I mean, you know, that should be a, a two-day fix. And if, if they see something, we're not a two-day fix, so maybe they start, you know, a bell goes off or a light goes off and they start checking that on a more regular basis.
All right, so.
I have a second question. The second question was, when we walk into apartment complexes where there's obviously a dual language, are we doing anything to help communicate the fact that we're gonna be on premise?
Again, I mean, I'm dealing with the apartment, the apartment complex management staff. Typically, I've never had an issue with a language barrier. Because usually, most of them are bilingual, and we've got people on staff that are bilingual, I can call and, and translate or whatever. And that, that hasn't been an issue.
I was just thinking more safety.
But we are, we are, we are providing for notice, and I would hope that would be, whatever notice is posted, somewhere in here.
It's twenty-four hour notice.
But it needs to be, it needs to be bilingual, right?
Yeah, we're asking the speaker to deal with her staff.
We're asking the apartment complex to do that, because for the most part, most of them, most of them will do a notice like either at the, at the dumpster, because a lot of people go there, or at mailboxes, because people are often going to the mailbox. So they, they'll do notices like that, and, you know, we're gonna ask them to do a, a notice such as that, that, you know. If Brookhaven will have some people on staff here.
Let me, in light of this discussion, let me give a little more explanation to. I understand the concerns about, about you, you want to address issues that might be, you know, they might be covering up a practice, allowing a practice that certainly is a life safety risk, like these electrical cords are tripping and cords and, and a gag grills and a gas tank. I, I, you know, and so I don't wanna tie our hands when it comes to a safety issue, addressing that by saying we, we've gotta wait five days before we go in and address something. I think that, you know, from a policy standpoint, as proactive as we can be about, you know, informing these communities about, you know, here's what we're gonna be looking for, here's what we wanna watch out for. And certainly, you know, if they know what our, you know, what our policies are and what we're gonna be addressing, then they, it's their responsibility to address it and clean it up before we're there. And I don't wanna tie our hands, like if you get a call on a life safety issue, on a code compliance thing, that you can't go in there because you haven't given five days' notice, I don't wanna create that environment.
Do you have to wait that, if you get a call?
But I see kind of what you're talking about.
So, so my concern is that we, we show that, you know, I think that the informational session would be very beneficial, showing that we're, we're, we wanna be, this is not a gotcha game, we wanna address and inform you as an apartment community what we're gonna be looking for. You know, I think that in, there's many steps in that regard that we can do, that's the intent that I'm for.
And that's what I was asking about Susan, after we adopt the policy, and make the three, so if you wanna have them for a tour or informational seminar, I'd like to be there, and I'm sure somebody else, people on council would like to be there, and we could set something up where you wanna do that. Like basically saying, we let them know, hey, this is what the city of Brookhaven's gonna be looking for, that's, that should preempt a lot of things in the future. They've got a policy.
We can do it like the builders forum.
Right.
Maybe one step further, even maybe have our communications department film this and have it online, so people can see what happens during inspections.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good initiative.
Could I, could I just clarify what actions we're taking today? I, I mean, it's an action item that we're gonna consider the code compliance inspections policy.
That's what I was gonna bring up, that needs to be removed from the agenda.
Yeah, policy's a part.
Right, policy's also.
As my preference, because it's an operational issue.
Correct.
Where's, where are we looking at that, Rebecca?
Of the agenda, the council agenda, first one, is it L, under old business, it's one, yeah, L one.
The reason it was on there because it was tabled for that day, so we took the margin.
So what we're gonna do here tonight on this?
Pushback to y'all.
When you open your meeting, no, you'll be removing it, you'll ask for a motion.
On that, on the amendment section.
But we are going ahead further on, on number seven, with the amending chapter eighteen. Does that have to do with the business licenses?
It's article five.
That's what we were just talking about, the policy, the code on the.
Interior and exterior.
It's the code part.
And we are, Pat, we are gonna vote on that, right? Okay, I just, can we talk about that, or is that?
That's what we've been talking about.
No, we haven't, we're talking about the inspections.
There's two programs, it's.
It's a separate code.
There are two programs that says side by side.
We talked about that the first, right?
One, one is the ordinance, and it's put in place because we have to qualify people to go and do these evaluations. So we have an ordinance for those, for the interior evaluations. And that's tied to business license. And then in that, that ordinance, there's just a one-liner that says, you know, that we, we're gonna do exterior evaluations based on a policy that we're gonna, we'll, we'll adopt, or, you know, we'll vet through the city attorney. And that's all that it says about that.
Yeah, that was the first thing we talked about, was, was where it came from, why it happened, why it's back on the calendar because of the.
But as I read this ordinance, it says that we are requiring a hundred percent inspection in the first year?
That's for the interior, yes, ma'am. That's for a business that doesn't have a business license now.
So they, but this is the first year of the de cab program too, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, technically, it started last year, but they weren't required to provide, this year they're required to provide with a business license. But it went into effect last year, so they had.
Voluntary or?
Well, they had a year to do their inspections and get everything up and running, knowing that with thirteen, they'd have to provide their, their report.
Because if they've been in business or they've done this before, it's only one-third of the units, is that right?
Yeah, but we've, we've never had, had them before.
So everybody's gonna have to do a hundred percent inspection of all units to get a Brookhaven business license.
Correct, just like a de cab license.
We're not worried that that's.
You just said, new operations now.
They're all. It's just in the first year that, that they get a business license.
This, this goes outside of that, this is everybody.
If they can prove that they've already done them all in a previous year, for, because they were proactive about it, that way. And they, then they could come to us with this hundred percent.
That's what the lady at Harshside, what, what was asking about is the place of the, you know, the, of John McPerry. They have inspections through their bank and they have inspection through the community's. DCA, and then Brookhaven has to have one too, but there's a list of contractors who provide those services, so they have to get inspected, but this one complex had their CO within a year, so they didn't have to do one. So, yeah, I mean, I guess they're all gonna have to be inspected.
Didn't the ordinance say CO within three, five years?
And here's.
Have they changed that?
That, that was in the de cab ordinance, I didn't leave that in, and, and I, and I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I forgot about it. I didn't leave that in, and here's the reason behind that, is the exit light that goes out, that expires after a year. Fire extinguisher expires after a year. Sprinkler systems expire after a year, so all those things have to be looked at. And so that's, you know, anybody that's done it within a year, then it makes sense that they, that they're, they're compliant.
It doesn't state code always require them on a daily basis, inspect sprinklers and inspect fire extinguishers?
They're supposed to, but I've, I've got pictures of a lot of them that are for two thousand and seven.
We're gonna have them inspect fifteen other things, because two things expire in a, I guess.
I see your point.
You know, I mean, for, if, if, if we've got a brand-new unit that's three years old and there were, there are items, I don't know that we need to be double-dipping on items that are controlled by some other higher authority, i.e. the state fire marshal.
Well, and, and again, like I say, the, the state fire marshal doesn't do the inspections on those, nor does the council. They are left up to the, the responsibility of the, the complex. I see a lot of them that are red-tagged and yellow-tagged, that means that they have violations and no one's been notified multiple years. And so, I mean, it's, it, a lot of the inspectors, the third-party inspectors, you know, for a newer complex, their price drops down so much that it's, I mean, they're, it's pretty cheap. I mean, they're, they're, they're running through these things for just a few dollars. So, I mean, I don't think it's.
We'll discuss this more though. When you, when you brought that up, I thought of that as well.
It's, and this is a new policy that has just been adopted by DeKalb County last year.
It's actually, it was adopted a few years ago. It had a ramp up in the process.
Implemented last year.
It was approved in eleven. It was, they gave twelve of the grace year, and thirteen, they were required to do it. So theoretically, the people that were looking at it started inspecting last year, realizing that thirteen, they'd be required to. But it was approved in late ten, early eleven.
I heard something about the fact that, that what they were inspecting, the list that DeKalb County had, not even got, had not completed that list until sometime in twenty-twenty, that there was, that there was some, that those inspections really couldn't even start because they didn't have the list until twenty-five.
I was just gonna say, I've had several of them submit reports that were done within the last twelve months, you know?
I wanna talk about that, Jim's point, and what you had told me previously about changing that from three to five to one. Is it, is it, I mean, do y'all agree that we should have a, make them have an inspection every year because of those three items? The yearly expiring items, should it be a separate inspection for that, or should?
Not really, just, just because then you're, then you're trying to regulate too many, too many variables.
And you don't wanna not regulate those three because you don't, I mean.
Yeah, you don't wanna miss something and, and, you know.
I just, you know, if, if it's a brand-new unit, most of the things that I've seen in there, you know, they could, they could, they could happen tomorrow. But I'm not sure that, that there's that burden to, for a new unit to, to be inspected.
I mean, to my, new, what's the, the tall is new?
Two years. You know, year to, to three years old, you know?
We need to receive the C, certificate of.
Right, yeah.
The last three years.
Well, I mean, things break, you know, things can break overnight, somebody can, somebody can nail a door shut, it's a, it's an emergency exit, you know? There are things that, that can happen overnight, I, I don't know, I mean, that, that's, that's the flip side of the, of the argument is that some of these things that aren't critical can happen pretty quickly.
We wanna have not inspected the exit, and there's a fire and nobody can see the exit light and the fire extinguisher is working, why did we, oh? Well, how was the cab getting away with it, for three to five, how was that, what problems did we manifest out of that?
Well, it's new, I mean, it's a new program. You know, as far as, you know, Roswell's implemented this program, Alpharetta, Smyrna, excuse me, Marietta.
And you're espousing right now?
They, they've all done a very similar program. And they're, I mean, all of those have just done a hundred percent. Just because, I mean, some of these, you don't know when the CO was gotten, you don't know if it's three years or four years, is it three and a half years, or is it four and three-quarters? I mean, so, I mean, it's, there's some logistics in there that it's difficult to, to see where they, where they actually sit. And is that three years from the date of CO, or the date of final, or the date of people moving in? You know, I mean, it's, it just kinda gets, you kinda have a hard time differentiating. And then, and then if you have, if you have one that's, you know, let's say eighty percent of them are outside of that three-year timeframe. Eighty percent of them submit a hundred percent this year. Then, five percent of them submit. Then 5% of them submit 100% next year because they're, they now fall outside of the three. And then you got 7% that, so then you're always trying to figure out, well, how many, who should be submitting 100% this? Now, wait, you did, you did 20%. Wait, are you doing 100%? I mean, there's a lot of logistics.
Well, that's, that's a very simple, you know, spreadsheet and tracking system. I mean, you know, we've got, yes, we have a lot of apartment complexes, but if you can't keep track of where they are in their inspections, then, then I think that's an issue that, that we have, not an issue that, that the apartment owners have. But, you know, it goes back to the original question of, of do we give the, the new properties a break on the, on when they're beginning inspections? You know, certificate of occupancy is a very definitive, I mean, there is a date certain. You know, and it's not when people move in, it's not, it's the CO. We can find the CO and we move forward from there. And.
I think two years for the date of CO.
I, you know, in my mind, two years is gracious, you know, give them, give them one year, I mean, at least, you know, things are going to break, but, but again, well, that's what he's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so.
You know, what kind of a burden does this really cause financially on the apartment complex? You're saying they go through.
The apartment inspectors that I've been hearing are anywhere from $10 to $20 a unit.
So you get a, some of these apartment complexes here along Claremont, you're going to have a thousand? So you're talking?
I don't think we have.
That's a big one.
Well, I'd say 500.
I guess one, seven, 35, most of them are in a couple hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
500 apartments, that would be fact out of luck. Okay.
To do all the interiors.
And that's, that's a big one. I'd say our average from that list that you gave me, Kevin, seemed to be about 250, two.
I don't think it's more than that.
As an average. Two to 250.
I'm going to do that over here.
No, they do 100% the first year.
Right, and how long does it do again?
And then the next year, they do 20%, and 20%, and 20%.
And it's always got to be a different 20%.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I would say, one of my comments is I'd like to, to lower that, or raise that to 35% so we're doing it over a three year cycle rather than a five year, just, you know. And even then, you know, with most of our apartments in the, in the 2 to 250 range, I think it, you know, going back three or a five year basis, things can get, can get hold of a hurry. And if we can, if we can reduce that, or increase the percentage, reduce the, the cycle to three years, I think that would be beneficial.
How do we check from which, that it's a different 20%?
Once they submit their report, in that report, it has a cover sheet that lists out the apartments that they looked at. And what we've done in the past is we've created a spreadsheet that has those apartment numbers in for each complex.
Does that overly burn some, y'all?
It's kind of.
I'm assuming, yeah. So that third year would actually have to include a balancing out of either all the other new apartments added or the ones that were removed.
Excellent.
Balance out. So you're finishing all of it in a three year period?
Well, I mean, previously it's been a 20%, so it's a five year cycle.
We have one clarification.
I just want to make sure I understand. So the amendment that we're voting, the ordinance that we're voting on tonight, let's see, amending chapter 18, has to do with the business licenses?
Yes. Well. It's everything in that Article 5 that we provided you? I think it's six pages this year.
This requires apartment owners to get inspections of their interior 20% every five years, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're currently talking, but that could be adjusted.
And that's in the ordinance, right?
Yes.
So we're preparing to vote on that tonight? Okay, if we want to amend it, we need to try to amend it tonight.
Yes.
Now, my other question originally was, this is, the deadline on this is the April 15th business license, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the reason we put in an effective date of April 16th was the fact that business licenses are due by April 15th. And rather than dive into this whole program, prior to that, we, we thought that that's cyclical complete before we put this in place.
But I thought they had to have the inspections in order to get their business license.
Well, anything that we wanted to change would go into effect after April. That way they're all vested in that previous de cab ordinance.
Yeah, there's a de cab code in place that we're currently. That then we have.
Yes, so if we change anything, that would go into effect after April.
I think what Rebecca's getting at is that we're voting on this tonight and we're talking about some changes. Is it still okay to vote on this tonight and have changes later or do we need to take it off?
Sure. Are you going to vote on it tonight?
We, we can still defer, I mean, to the next meeting.
Well, but if they need it to get business licenses, I think.
Well, we, sorry, we, we actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the Parktown North Complex. If we have something in place that we can share with them and educating them as to where we are with things, that would be great. If we don't, that's okay, but ideally we have that.
Right, well, but we do have something in place.
Well, we have the de cab ordinance. Is that right?
There was an object, yes.
And that's still in place?
I see.
Did we remove that?
What we're trying to get at is that, do we need to adopt this tonight to help y'all on your job or do we need to defer to make these changes or need some advice?
Or the changes that we're talking about is going from 20% to 30%?
Or, yeah. Well, I'd say 25% throughout a four year cycle.
That sounds good.
Okay.
I mean, I.
But I'm, but hold on, but on that, that's for existing. What's the 100% first year?
100% is everyone.
Everybody.
Yeah, first year.
So that seems to be, I'm concerned about the, you know, we've, we've, and this started with DeKalb County. We're saying, okay, this year it's, it's important to get 100%.
I think it is.
But in the future, we're only saying.
With a random sample every 20, 25% or 20% every other, every.
Well, I simply want to make sure that you're, right. And that's okay, I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I want everything to be up to life safety code, but I don't want it to be that, you know, we do have businesses in City of Brookhaven that don't have business licenses.
That's true.
And, you know, they're going to have to come to us.
This is already in our ordinance.
And get a business license, we want that happen sooner rather than later.
Okay, I can.
And.
You're saying you want to get the business license before you, you know, this can't even.
No, no, I'm saying I don't want to, I don't want to create a code that, that really.
Until April 16.
Forces them to sort of skirt the law of being legal. You know, if they have to get 100% of this ordinance, 100% of these things before they get a business license, we're forcing them to remain out of compliance and, and.
If they got a business license before April 15th, it would be under the de cab, which would be 20%.
No.
Correct?
No, it's 100%.
20%.
100%. Yeah. I think, I, I understand where you're going with this. What we've had happening here lately is apartment complex comes in and says, I'm here to get my business license. They say, all right, fill out your paperwork, do you have your report? No, we don't have the report. Okay, we'll take your paperwork, you need to get this report, you're not done, you're valid.
Right.
Until we get your report back.
Yeah.
So that way, you know, they, they've already done all of that, they've submitted the paperwork, they've paid their fee, they, they're.
So they know they're.
They're halfway there.
Right.
So then they just have to go out and do it.
But shouldn't they have already been doing all of this anyway with the de cab codes?
They should have a business license.
Correct, but they should be doing, have been doing the inspections. Because that's the code we adopted.
We, we believe approximately 20% of these developments do not have business licenses.
Right, that's huge.
Because we got a list from DeKalb County on who does have them and we found that many that they don't have any records of them having one.
Right.
Now, maybe they'll produce something under a different name or something, but.
Yeah.
First year is 100%.
Well.
Subject for years.
Because they all know that, have they all, have they all been contacted? I mean, notified that they don't have the business license?
When we find one that, that doesn't have a business license.
Yeah, this is what DeKalb County passed two years ago.
Finance, and, and I assume that he is not fine.
Well, again, I think it's, you know, as proactive as this as we can, I think, I mean, I don't want us to, to diminish the importance of this and I don't want us to try and bend the rules for people who, in, in this case, it appears are not running above board operation. But I want us to be proactive, even with these people that are out of compliance, want us to let them know, hear the rules of the game and not really just spring, spring it on them. As proactive in, in advising people that, hey, they know the rules, go out and get in compliance and have a way that they can, you know, and, and I haven't heard anything that, that is going to prohibit that. But I do think that advance notice to all these people, especially in the case when they don't have a business license, and these are obviously people who, who I don't think know the rules of the game.
Yeah, well, eight, the other 80% got letters, I guess, early on.
Do you have any comments about any of those persons?
Yeah, I was communicating a little bit, but they're all on it. I know a lot of people use the term business license. We're not actually licensing anyone to be able to do something. It's, the, the law was changed many, many years ago to change the terminology to an occupation tax. We're actually taxing them for operating within the business, it's not a regulatory function. So when they come to us with their, you know, their application or the renewal form or anything, they're still obligated to pay the tax. That doesn't go away. And it's not contingent on them submitting some report.
Oh.
They still have to pay the tax, that's irregardless. What this process is doing is it's saying, okay, we're going to add an additional review procedure when it's dealing with an apartment complex and we have that renewal form in front of us. In addition to them paying the tax, hey, finance department, we would like you to send us the, the application or renewal forms so that we can also cross check it to make sure they're in compliance with this other ordinance that we have in place.
So it's not affecting your policy at all, it's just.
No.
I got you.
No, and, and in fact, you can't, you, you actually can't make one contingent on the other. You can't come in and say, you're not allowed to pay this tax until you get everything else in order. You have to pay the tax.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's similar to a business that comes into Brookhaven and wants to set up shop in a place where they're not zoned for it. It may be office and industrial and you've got someone doing salon services, for example, they're not allowed to do that. Well, they legally, by state law, they have 30 days where they're allowed to go in and operate before they even file their forms with us. So they could sign a lease, open up shop, start operating, and then we notice them or they come to us 30 days later and would say, sorry.
Exactly what happened with the, the proposed pawn shop at Mesh Corners.
Pawn shop, they operate for 30 days. I don't know the specifics.
Part of.
But we, we'll tell them, you know, okay, thank you, and part of that application process is we'll send it to community development, they'll look and say, oh, can't do that there. And they'll notify them, you're not allowed to operate that particular type of business in this area. And it creates a problem, but state law does allow them to open up shop before they come to us. So the laws are exclusive, what you see here is an internal process where one department is cooperating with another department, just sharing information to make that other department more capable of doing their job.
So are we saying, I mean, we're saying 100% of them by April of 2014, really? Or are we saying 100% of them by, of this year?
This year.
So much. That's right, I know it has nothing to do with their license.
And, and I've talked to a couple of them and, you know, the, the one fellow, I mentioned him in the, in my statement there. And he said, well, you know, we didn't know you guys were going to adopt this ordinance, so we didn't do it. I said, well, it's kind of a gamble, I said, but you missed on, on that lotto, but, I said, you know, and here's the thing, I said, if you get signed up with an inspector and you get, get them on your list or your program.
Right.
I mean, let me know, you know, and, and we'll keep you in on that, that previous addition because you're in, you're getting your ducks in the rook, sister.
Yep, those, the list of those inspectors, how have they been vetted?
What we do is, they come to me, they bring me their certification, which has to match what the ordinance says. Business license, so that I know that they're an actual business and not just a bob down the street. And also liability insurance, if they're going to be on someone's property.
Is there a background check though?
No, no, not.
I see a lot of.
Well, we're, we're, we're not hiring, so we can't do it.
Yeah, but you're giving, you're giving out a list of approved inspectors from the city to these complexes, so it can be seen as an endorsement and.
Well, and, and that's why I wouldn't give out the list with less than three people on it. Because I don't, I don't endorse any of them, I mean, I'm, this is, these are just the people that have met the call.
If one goes and is taking bribes and, you know, that's was on our list.
I can't, if I know that, in our ordinance, if we know that, then we can stop them from submitting reports for five years.
Well, how about references?
A lot of these guys I know from other jurisdictions, so, I mean, you know, we certainly could get references, but mostly it would be references from other apartment complexes.
Bill, is there any presidents for that? I mean, it's made me nervous when I saw that list, but you might know a lot of them, but still, to me, you've got a list of 15 inspectors or 10, you know, 10, 15, 20 dollar a unit. And I'm just seeing the potential for trouble on something like that.
Well, there is, you're absolutely right. But this, this whole methodology has taken place because of the issues of issuing administrative warrants to go into the interiors of buildings. So this entire scheme has been developed as an attempt to sit there and ameliorate the, the truly chronic problems in substandard multifamily housing. And there, there is certainly at least some trust factor that, that we have to have with the inspectors and setting a minimum criteria of what their knowledge is and what they should do and how they report out. There's certainly the opportunity to, to violate, but then if they do violate, there is certainly a, I mean, there's a death penalty on them because they can't, they can't work here for five years. They probably lose their ability to work in any jurisdiction at the point in time that they were caught. So there's, there's not a, there's, we don't have a lot of methodologies in which to catch them, except to the extent that we might find a violation right behind them after they certify it. And, and at that point in time, when they get the death penalty and they really probably, they're out of business at that point.
Could you provide them some, I don't know if it's any on, I know that you might say you don't endorse these on this, but could you provide them a little bit of language on, on that list that you had, that you give to people that says?
Disclaimer.
Disclaimer.
Yeah.
Disclaimer, sure.
Absolutely, I mean, I just think that would be, I just don't want, I just see somebody saying, yeah, we had two, a $2,000 firm, and he said, he'd inspect a third of those and just give me, have to give him some money and that, so he inspected a third and, you know, they called it even.
Yeah, and, and again, like, like Bill said, there's a level of.
I got you, a disclaimer would be good on that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, the court is never indicative of future success.
Based on what Chris said, we're taking this out of 15, which is business license, and putting it in 18, which is nuisance, is that correct?
Multifamily.
No, we're, we're taking it out of, we're taking it out of 15 and putting it into 18. So we're taking it from business license, putting it into nuisance. Is there any reference or how does somebody know who's applying for business license that this applies other than when they bring in a paperwork, it's not there? Do we have a reference on our business license form? How, because it's not in the, in the, in that chapter, how, how do we make the connection?
You've got a one liner in there, don't you, that says, that references it?
Okay.
So, I mean, it just references that, that you need to have it.
We, we have instructions and.
Okay, so.
Questions that are available and community development, they can certainly give us some language and we can just add it to those forms so that they're, they're aware.
If we could, so that because we are taking it out, just make sure that they know that they've got to look elsewhere to be fully compliant.
Yeah, so just to make sure I understand all the timeline, these, these 100% inspection things were adopted by DeKalb County in 2001. Maybe they didn't have all their regulations until sometime in 2012, but basically this has been on the radar even before the City of Brookhaven existed. And then, and so these entities have had ample time to acknowledge that they needed to have 100% compliance in their interior inspections.
The ones that have been licensed from the past.
Right, so do we want to have change in height for 25% instead of 20?
I'd almost like to defer the whole, you know, because we're doing policies, we're doing that, there's, we, it's, we don't need to pass this tonight because it doesn't go into effect technically until April 16th, is that correct?
What is your?
Well, here again, if it's possible to pass it tonight, we, we are educating folks every day.
Right.
And I'd like to be able to tell them our story.
It's not going to hurt us to do this tonight.
Yeah, I mean, let's decide the number, we can talk about that right now.
I'd say 25%, let's do that four year cycle. What is your thought on that first?
I, I'm not very happy with that, you're actually getting it done a little quicker.
I think the only.
35% which takes it to a three year cycle.
I think the only problem, quote unquote, with it is everyone is used to a 20% routine, just because of working in other jurisdictions.
That's true.
But, you know, yeah, I mean, we.
Yeah, but, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm sorry not to cut you off, but unfortunately with, with the nature of our housing stock, five year cycle is getting very long. If we had, if we had newer apartments in Roswell. If we had newer apartments in Roswell or John Creek or some of those, the five-year cycle is not so bad. Down here, a five-year cycle.
Now the times change since we're here.
It's almost easy to me to justify the thirty-three and a third or whatever.
Yeah, or thirty-five percent, just.
Yeah, so that you've got.
It's gonna cost them more each year though, right?
Yeah, but again, it's fairly dominant. I would just say a third.
Yeah, a third is a third.
What do y'all think?
I like that.
Yeah, and the purpose of this is life-saving incentive. We're just being more diligent, requiring apartments to be more diligent than other communities.
Well, I think we also know that, one, that the CAD regulation is pretty new and that a lot of these apartments have not been, our older apartments have not been inspected in quite some time.
Certainly be a way to, you know, it's a first step towards getting things changed, you know, a little quicker.
I'd feel better if we just knew the status of what kind of shape the apartments are in. I mean, we've seen some horrible examples out there, and it's hard to sleep at night thinking about it.
Any opinions, Bill?
Well, we do have, I mean, we are required a hundred percent this first year.
Sure.
So we're gonna know the status.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so a third.
Let's do a third.
And I think the only other discussion I heard, yeah, the only other discussion I heard was about whether a new unit, you want to go one year or two years or three years.
Two years is fine with me.
Probably two.
All right, so two changes will go from twenty-five percent.
Just really, we iterate, just make sure that last year on the, can we say one third? That last year is a catch-all year.
Any remaining units.
Any remaining or depleted units.
And that's obviously just a third, so we're not ending up with one percent of them or something.
Right, we wanna just cycle up.
Three, three, one, three, three, three.
Round up, please.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so, yeah, so the two-year and then the three-year.
Every.
All right, so that's a support for me.
Yeah, especially in my aging stock of this inventory that we have, I mean, it's well beyond, you know, reasonable age right now.
Okay, I can just follow up, just to close this conversation. The community development department will then be sending out to you all the policy, as you all have discussed this, and their standard operating procedures. They're gonna give you a couple of days to review it, and so if there's no comment, forever hold your peace so they can move forward then. So Kevin, you can just make sure your staff is.
Well, that's in our packet tonight, right, in the work packet?
Right, but we had talked about instead of a five-day notice, we were looking at seventy-two hours.
Can you send this as a Word doc so that if we do wanna make comments, that we can redline it? And also, can you give us through the weekend, to Monday? Is that gonna give us the?
Monday morning, at nine AM. These guys have got to get to work.
I think they're, they're, they're the new sheriff in town over there.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, I also think that it's important that we get something out to those communities so that they know.
Well, I couldn't agree more. And the other thing too is, you've got a very willing staff that wants to have this forum with the landlords. We have Penny Round, who represents the apartment association, you know, she needs to be invited to that too, and they need to have, they need to have two things. One, they need to have a complete ordinance that they can start sharing with the community. They need to have their standard operating procedures completed, and they need to know that they have the full support of the mayor and council, so that we don't have any runners that wanna come back to you all and try and make changes while they're trying to do their job.
All right.
Just because I just.
Five forty-nine, thirty-seven.
That apartment community did have a good idea that, I don't know that it's in our policy, about, you know, making sure the criminals don't remain in our apartments and reporting those criminals that are living there so that they, you know, they can't be tenants in our community.
That's a police program, actually?
Yeah, it's. It's an apartment association program, to make sure they're not recycling people.
That's right.
It is, but it's usually a partnership with the police.
Right.
So once we get our police force in place, I'm sure that'll be something that'll be.
Right, but I do, and I definitely want to try and to implement that into our policies because I think it's a good way to make sure that we don't have, you know, shifting criminals and felons.
I'm in favor of tying that into license renewal.
All right.
One last clarification, because there was some discussion on the amount of time for notification. What did we settle on, was that?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
I mean, I.
Twenty-four for the residents and forty-eight.
I don't even want, you know, long-term, I'd like it, I'd like y'all.
Forty-eight for the residents, twenty-four for the complex.
Well, I think forty-eight. If this is not really an issue where it deals with life safety.
Okay, all right, yeah. Yeah, that's right, forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight notice to the complex, twenty-four for the resident?
Yeah.
Wait, but how do we have to get notice to residents?
We don't.
No, the landlord does.
The landlord does.
However they do, however they, however they communicate with their. A lot of them have built email lists for other residents, they do a lot of communication that way.
Yeah, I don't wanna have a burden on the city to have to.
No, we don't want to do that, it would be the.
There is a requirement that the landlord, even here, that the landlord provides notice for four hours.
Yeah, 'cause we don't want anybody going, who are you on, my property?
Right.
We don't want that.
Do they, I mean, in complexes with high rates of non-English speakers, do they have to provide a bilingual or a trilingual notice?
The managers deal with that, yeah. And just a closing comment, these reports we put together is part of the education process. Just 'cause they get a report saying something's wrong, I would venture to guess at least half of the complexes we visit appreciate it. They don't realize that they're breaking rules, and so it's part of that education process.
What about the other half?
I'd like to propose to council that we're having these work sessions regularly, we're gonna be getting reports. I'd like to hear back what you're hearing from code enforcement, what the results of these are, so we can get a status update on what's been going on. You're doing an average of one complex a month now on a random poll on Wednesdays, right?
Well, as soon as we get this.
Okay, but basically, we've been doing this at least once a month, so we can get a report back, what was it, that complex. I would appreciate that.
Especially this first one, we want y'all to see the report we put together. It's very graphic, and you'll see the photographs that go right with the code violations.
Yeah, but I know you've been trying to count, get a good count on the apartment, what do you want to, and how many do you think are still missing?
The latest is over eight thousand units.
What's the number of complex?
I'm gonna, no, well, sixty-one was on the first list I sent. Over the last two weeks, we've probably identified another six or eight, so I think we're approaching seventy.
Can I get that email?
Absolutely.
I heard seventy-two from you in previous conversation.
Well, I think that's where we're gonna be.
I get seventy-two hours.
I think we're gonna be right around there. What's interesting is that you'll have two different apartment complexes that may be operating in a common name, and is that two or is that one?
We're about to have three more, I mean, two more already on the, those aren't counted right.
And we found a couple that were on the.
What was that?
Thanks, Kevin, for having accuracy.
It's almost over.
Is that four and above?
Sir?
Complexes four and above, what's the minimum?
Stories?
No, no, minimum units. Well, what do you consider a complex, is it four units and above or?
Four.
Okay.
So you're gonna have what you need for tomorrow now.
All right, we can pass it if you vote yes.
These adjustments that we're talking about, which is in the code itself, are just changing twenty percent to a third each year, and that exemption going from one year to two years, that's all it's changing.
That's it.
And the forty-eight hour.
Yeah.
That's part of the policy.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Good presentation, thank you all your work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, the government authority?
Well, before we get to that, Kevin, is there anything else in the text amendment regarding the substandard lots, are we good with the zoning ordinance that we talked about today?
Thank you.
I'm just gonna talk about it.
You know, you can have the mayor and council have a split data issue, which is a quick regardless, we need to get notice from them to look at it.
Right.
I'd love to get a legal opinion on it.
Right. What Kevin is talking about, what he and I met about, is we have some platted lots that, of course, came over from the county, that by the literal interpretation of the zoning ordinance, it requires a certain width at the, for the lot, or, you know, a depth or whatever the area regulations might be, and because they don't meet that, they're non-conforming and they are restricted from issuing a permit. There is a proviso in the zoning ordinance that takes that into account, that by the adoption of the zoning ordinance, where there are, and it goes under the interpretation sign, but where there are substandard lots, but they are basically subdivided, they shall be treated as conforming lots so that they can get a permit. What Kevin wants is just to have a read by the city attorney to be sure that, you know, we're good to be able to issue permits, because at this point in time, we've been stopped from issuing those permits. This is a very common passage in all local government zoning ordinances where it does recognize that when you're adopting a zoning ordinance and you're taking these properties in, that there's gonna be some pieces that aren't exactly rectangle or don't meet exactly the dimensions of what's called out for that particular zoning district. So we thought that there might have to be a text amendment to take a look at that, and if we find that to be so, we just wanna alert you that we're gonna be working on that to bring that back. So if there's not a prob, if there isn't a requirement of that and our attorney tells us we're good to go, then we'll just keep moving forward.
Along those same lines, we've got a sort of a parallel issue of the section of the ordinance that prevents somebody that owns two adjacent non-conforming lots from developing them as two, even though they're lots of record, from developing them as two individual lots.
Right, and that's part of this requirement too.
And we need to get that out of there because we had an eighty-year-old lady who almost lost her house because we had to figure out, unfortunately, staff worked with us to figure out how we could get around that, but she inherited one twenty years ago, she inherited the other ten years ago, they were both non-conforming. Technically, she couldn't sell them as separate lots, and we were able to figure out how to get around that, and, but we need to get that language out of there because ninety percent of the lots at Asher Park are non-conforming.
Right.
You know, just simply because they were, they were done, well, they were platted in the fifties and, you know.
Is yours non-conforming?
Yeah, you know, but they're zoned R-seventy-five, but they're all sixty-five, a lot of, you know, so it's, I mean, I'm sure it's the same in Brookhaven Heights and Fields, you know.
Yeah, sixty-five is actually a generous one, there's a lot of fifties and forties.
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
One other text amendment, excuse me. Also, we've had conversations in the planning department regarding a particular project, some council members know about called The Groves, but it's indicative of some other issues that could come up citywide, and that is, you know, we're taking a look at creating a new zoning classification, a planned unit development, where we can allow some creativity and more flexibility. We've got a project right now that was approved in the county, and then the economy took a nosedive on this project, and the economics of it just don't work anymore from the standpoint of allowing those particular units to be built, and now we have a developer that wants to do some freestanding or townhomes.
It's fee simple, yeah, the original approvals are condos.
Right, and so we're looking at that, and we're trying to, you know, find a way that there is, a way that the county has shared with the planning of community development, I believe, but there's also the idea of looking at creating a new zoning classification, so we'll want to come back, you know.
Where is this company, can you tell us?
It's just by Deborah O'Come.
We passed on this tour.
The Groves, the forty-seven unit. It's been installed for five years now, most of this, so, I mean, it's a blight on the neighborhood, what's going on, so we really need to address this for our awareness.
So Kevin's group is working on that to see if, one, there's a way that we can interpret that through our current ordinance, the way the county did, or if that is not the solution, you know, we do wanna take a look at creating this new zoning classification.
So if you have to do the new zoning classification, what's the time for?
Yeah, and I'm glad you asked, I'll just make that one on that. Once we have it prepared, you still have the planning commission, the planning commission would review it and make the recommendation to see the council productions. So the first step is, we gotta finish getting the planning commission trained, we've got four members that weren't able to attend the training last weekend.
We have four trained, what's the set of three trainees?
Three trainees.
So it's a seven member, so we're one short of a form.
Correct. The next opportunity is in Calhoun, a little bit north of Adairsville, on the fifth of April, I believe, and they are being invited to that, and so that will be the next opportunity for them. We don't have an April meeting, so that's okay. The first meeting that they could hear this, where I get all this training stuff resolved, would be in May, so maybe we make a recommendation to y'all.
That's if we take the ordinance route.
Right, but we're still looking at the.
So April fifth, have any of them said they could go to the Calhoun thing, do we know?
We don't have response from them yet.
Have they communicated with them?
What we're waiting for is for Christie, the trainer, to tell us that she has four seats available in Calhoun.
Well, we have people on other jurisdictions that are trained, that's a better part of the space.
Exactly.
Let's just get one there.
Exactly, so we need to, we need to communicate with the, have we sent an email to?
Actually, is it Seth? I'm sorry, Stan, the chairman of that board, has been communicating directly with Christie, and so I think everyone's aware of that, but we wanna know that those seats are available.
Just send an email out, just say, hey, I recognize you're around, and that's it, because it, you know, especially Stan likes to be communicated with, so.
Okay, if we don't go the ordinance route, can we get a read, an update, a status, status update by next council meeting latest?
As often as you would like, and that's, that's no trouble at all. Unfortunately, because it's prior check for twenty-seven, it's still gonna have to go through the planning commission, even if we did an amendment to the existing zoning districts, so that process unfortunately isn't gonna be able to be accelerated unless you start having special meetings or something.
What is the next, what is the next, what is a planned meeting, the next planned meeting for the planning commission?
They're gonna have one yet.
And when, when would it be, as soon as they assemble?
As soon as they have a forum.
Training comes first and.
Do we have other things on the docket for them besides this particular issue?
Not this time.
So once they get a forum, we could call the meeting fairly quickly and begin to move along?
It's advertising, yeah. We got thirty days, we got advertising for it.
Call it?
You don't call them.
Thirty days?
You don't call them.
They call them.
They have to advertise fifteen days prior to the public hearing for any text amendment, any zoning reclassification, any rezoning, public hearing, anything of that sort, it would have to be under the same procedure zone. So fifteen days prior to the meeting date. Yes, Howard has created the schedule.
You've approved an actual.
You, you know, I understand that this is, needs to be done quickly, but you gotta realize also that the planning development, if we do need to go that route, sort of with the Pandora's box of all sorts of other opportunities to do developments, you know, that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna keep the flame under this one.
Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate that, but, you know.
I would too, we've informed them, they need to get.
You know, I'm hoping that we can do it, you know, the CAD has a memo, and if we can do it, you know, coordinates with that, then we can move forward, but if we do have to go to the PUD then, that route, then there will be a little bit of effort and needs going to that to make it, make it right.
I think whatever the resolution is, I still think we need to pursue a PUD for other opportunities elsewhere in the city.
You know, besides the Calhoun thing, what about that R-trainings training?
Yes, I have not had a chance to talk to Bill about that, but Bill and I have done a tag team training before, so we could do that too.
I mean, because I really wanna, they're antsy enough, and I don't wanna have them go to Calhoun, rather have, can you do that, can you commit to me that y'all can do that?
I could commit to you that the community development department will put up an eight-hour training session that we will be here at to support them, because they're the trainers on this.
So y'all can do that, we don't have to go through the, you don't, you're frowning up there.
The process of preparing for that is more than just asking people to show up, but we have done it before.
You'd rather them go to Calhoun? If they can't all go to Calhoun.
The part of this that is another thing that we gotta, we gotta write the ordinance to, I mean, it doesn't just appear because we've.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we gotta have their own training, we pay them two thousand dollars to train our people, you know.
This is, this'll be a ninety-five dollar for each of them.
For Calhoun would be.
Correct.
But if they can't all go, we got one person to be trained.
The news is we need to get one.
But we, you know, realistically.
Ultimately, we need one.
Right. So what I'm trying to avoid is having one or two people getting trained, having to pay a lot of money to train two people. So I'd like to get it solved. Either they all can go to Calhoun or we need to train them here.
The next one's in early May and August. So each month they.
Well, what we'll do is, we'll see what the response is for the April meeting. If they can't all make it and only a few of them can, we'll send a few and then we'll just have to, those that remain, we'll have to train them here. You know, Kevin has already talked with me about that there's a book that we can get from the American Planning Association. You know, that's at least worth two hours of review and training. And there's some other things that, you know, that we can do in-house. And if we can get that organized, you know, we'll, we'll work towards that. So let's, let's see what kind of response we get first and see if we can get them up there.
Yeah, I just want to get it, I want to get them, you know, this doesn't look right now to have our planning, we have a planning commission appointed and they're not. I know they couldn't all be there, but the ZDA is down. They're a little more eclectic, the planning commission folks.
Understood.
All right. Thank you. All right. Development authority, one thing I have to say on that, that we're going to do, we're going to do a seven member rather than a nine member. Got a couple councilors that are fighting to be on that.
Let me mention one thing about that if I may, on the, on the, on the council member. The, the state law doesn't, provides that you may have a council member on there as a director. Our, our charter provides that council members may be ex officio members of boards and commissions with no voting powers. Now, the, the real question becomes, does your, does your council member actually become a voting member in that, in that board of commission? And there, we've done the research and there really isn't an answer on that. So the point is, while you, if you put a council member on and if they, and if they're a voting member and it becomes a four-three vote in favor of whatever the council member was on the side that prevailed, eventually we might have law on whether or not that council member could or could not vote. So I just point that out as, is something that's out there, speculative at this point in time, but it is unanswered as a matter of law. I wouldn't say that you couldn't do it.
But it's not prohibited. Can they reach back and say it was prohibited?
Well, they could say that, they could say that, ultimately, they could say that that council member couldn't, should not have voted. They could always sit under state law, but it's unclear, there's, there's no clear definition from the research that we've done as to whether or not that could, that member sits as an ex officio and can't.
Well, the statute was pretty clear, wasn't it? It said you may.
It says you may appoint as a director.
Well, it specifically brings them out as a director, not as a regular member?
Well, that's a number.
Which, which, that's a charge to imply voting rights.
I, I, I don't disagree with you.
He's just doing his duty.
I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing out, I'm pointing out that there is, that there's a potential out there that someday Mike raises his head. Of course, you know, it's not a four-three vote and you're not on the winning side. There's never an opportunity to find that out. There's a dearth of any case law.
So, so if a council member can be a director, potentially with voting right, as you're talking now, and you just made the comment that a council member can sit on ex officio without having a voting right, can there be multiple council members present to participate? One with voting right, maybe one without?
The, no, under the state law, you only get one.
Right.
But one what, voting or non-voting?
It just says you get one director. It does not give a definition. I wish it did. It would make it a lot easier to have the general law.
It would make it more complicated if you have any people there that aren't, that will make it, well, that they're the influence or, you know.
All right. Is ex officio considered a director of the classification?
Well, the, well, this is my point. You have an absolute right to put one council member on that board for the authority. We have under, our charter says, when you go on an authority or a board or a commission, you have, as a, as a, as a member of the council, you are ex officio and you can't vote. We're going under state law to create the development authority. All right? It's, it does not say whether you are a voting or non-voting member.
It says two- to four-year terms to it. What do you want to choose?
And so the point of, the point I'm saying is, I don't see any reason you could not have him as a voting member, but there is that slight place in the future we might have to litigate to see if it works.
Partial objection noted. Partial sub objection.
I just, very discretion, very discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. Full objection. That's what I, that's a full objection.
No objection, no objection, Your Honor. Just full discretion.
All right. Okay. Other than that.
Already done one.
We already did one.
We're taking care of it.
All right. And we have an agreement update. We got to hurry because we have a break or something?
We have some food. There's some food here. We can get you some food and you can.
Are we still going to get a budget and a benefits update?
Was that on this too?
Yes, that's, that was to be added. That was to add.
Okay, so let's just, let's do two, three and then, I like to hear the budget update. Can we make it short on a time?
Tell me for three minutes because I can be real quick. I'm just going to talk about parks and rec. And I'll let Bill talk about police because you have that on your agenda tonight as an IGA. Our last meeting with the county was last Wednesday to finish up the IGAs and what we had remaining were police and parks and recreation. You'll hear about police in just a minute. On the parks and recreation, as you all will remember, I shared with you several weeks ago, the county shared with us that that cost would be seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for, you know, for eleven months.
Of the park, yeah.
Right. So of course, we, you know, did not agree to that. And there is, you know, philosophical issue on the whole matter that Brookhaven residents or county residents, so therefore why should we pay? But, you know, there is an expectation, you know, of the cost and that the charter is clear that, you know, they are responsible to provide services at direct costs, you know, to the city. So, you know, that argument was made and so we were able to move on with that. The offer was made, which was at the same amount of the seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars, that we could accept seventy-seven thousand dollars a month, or we could accept sixty-six thousand dollars a month and we would collect the fees for programming. We did not want to accept the fees for programming because the county had already admitted to me that they were supplementing the fees by ninety percent. So I didn't want us to get into that problem that they could come back and say, we're short this month, now you, you need to pay, especially since it was going on direct costs. The question that they were given two weeks ago was, on that special tax district, that rise on the tax bills when you were unincorporated, of that point one six, you know, of that amount that was billed out to residents, what did that represent in recreation? Because they said it included recreation and transportation and something else. So the answer came back that that, for recreation out of that point one six of a mileage rate, was four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So there was discussion of the four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to build the city plus the three hundred plus thousand that they were augmenting out of the county's general fund. Long story short, we broke away from the table and I was able to have a conversation with Richard Stogner and I offered four hundred thousand over eleven months, which is thirty-six thousand dollars a month. They accepted that. We think that that is a very good deal. We priced it out with the private side to see what it would cost us to maintain the parks and provide the programming and everything else that the county was providing at thirty-six thousand. And just the maintenance, the mowing, the blowing of the leaves, the trimming of the trees, et cetera, would cost by itself forty-five thousand dollars a month. And that didn't include any personnel, lifeguards, summer camp, anything of that sort, or operating the community centers. So you. So that's all I have to say. So we're, you're going to be, you're going to be seeing on your agenda the twenty-sixth, the IGA for parks and recreation.
Effective when?
Effective immediately upon, it will come to us and then it goes to the board of commissioners for approval. It will be for eleven months.
Chris.
One other thing to report, Chris makes mention of how he's going to pay for it all. They are very flexible with us. They are very flexible with us on how we pay that out. And you'll hear that from Bill on the police services as well.
Charges in nothing.
A black one. Boy, that must be a high, high amount. Anyway, they are, they are willing to work with us and to be flexible. We have two years to pay for this and they have a carrying charge of two-tenths of one percent factored into that if we don't pay on a monthly basis. What I'm recommending is that we look at paying a hundred thousand for the first year when we get our first bill. And then the bills that follow, the invoices that follow, we wait until two thousand fourteen where we have a more predictable revenue stream and where we can, you know, budget for that.
So if we're, go ahead. So if we are paying for the parks, should we go ahead and take our park ownership?
Well, if you do, then you're looking at a very high cost, more than what the county is going to be charging us for that. Because I, the, the figures that I have, and I'll be happy to share them in full detail, doesn't even include the Parks and Rec director, a parks supervisor, or a program manager. And that's probably another three or four hundred thousand with benefits, et cetera.
So it's thirty-six thousand a month?
Correct.
And that's, and that's what we're being, is that the contract will say thirty-six thousand a month?
Correct. And that is less.
So what if we go to December for, you pay that putty, putty charge that month too?
This is for eleven months. Yes.
It's, it's based on eleven months.
Right. Now, if you started up your parks and rec programs sooner than that, there is a proviso on giving notice. I think that was thirty days, Bill. I think it's, there is some time period in which we can give them notice that we no longer need their services. And there's also a notice provision that we could extend it.
Yeah. All right.
Well, I think that notice is, is important because I think there's more to be hashed out and, and the possibility of, of looking at, you know. If we're paying, if we're billing the citizens of Brookhaven for providing the services in these parks, programming services, who are we actually, you know, what, what, who are we paying for? Who's, who's using it?
Well, that's the rub. And we've asked that question. Unfortunately, the county does not have a differential. They have no idea who's coming in and signing up for programming and they, they make no distinction. When we run our program, we're going to make that distinction. But I will just say, just one thought, and you all have given us this directive from the beginning, and that was equal to or better than the county. And that point one six comes down to better than what the county was doing because that represented four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and we're at four hundred thousand.
Well, what did Dunwoody pay for the parks? Why did Dunwoody not pay for parks?
Well, they took them over. Didn't you?
At the time of Dunwoody's incorporation, the cab vigorously disputed our rights to have the parks.
Right, right.
Not sure why they would want to not give up a money loser. They, they argued that they wanted, that they, the city had no rights to the parks. We didn't own the parks. They weren't going to bill us for something we didn't own. They weren't going to bill us for something we had no rights to own.
And I want to hash on that, on for a minute because what, what are we paying for fire services for this year?
Well, it was three point three-nine last year.
I'm talking about what is this, what are we paying as a city? Nothing. We're just paying out of our taxes, right? Now, that's not in the, in the middle portion of our take. What are we paying for health services? We've done IGAs on these other, other services. We're not paying. It's coming out of our tax bill. We don't own the parks. It's libraries. What are we paying for libraries? Nothing. It's my understanding that the cab is charging us this because they're assuming we're going to take over parks. They made that assumption. And, you know, in my mind, they assume we're going to take over the parks so then they get to charge for it. We haven't said anything about, the only thing I've ever said, what we've talked about was possibly taking over the parks in late fall, you know, at that time. So they're depending on, we paid taxes for that, like for the parks last year. This was broken in some of the IGAs. I appreciate what y'all did with the negotiations. I think you all did a great job. I think if we have to pay thirty-six thousand dollars, it's a good deal. And I want to say that right off the bat. But the fact that we're being charged to use parks, we already paid taxes for them, and everybody in the county can use, to me is just irritating. And I want to know, I know that, and you looked at pricing out for vending for this year, but I want to know legally how we can be forced to pay for something we've already paid taxes for and that everybody in the county can use. Everybody in the county can't use our police force.
Well, here's, here's the thing there, right? It's paid for out of the special service district.
Right. Is that the same as the unincorporated district?
It is the unincorporated.
Entirely paid out of that?
That is what, that is their position plus host dollars.
Okay, so there we go.
We are getting, we're getting our share of the host dollars back now this year.
Still.
But that's what was new to me because in all the feasibility studies and the analysis, it was never disclosed that parks came in that on, that special services line item on the budget.
It does. And part of the, and part of the issue that the county argues is that, that they would continue to maintain the same level of services and, and we would, it would be reimbursed at the, at the direct cost, the same cost.
But where are some of the items that Jay mentioned? Where are the, where does the library and the health department attend?
Those are county-wide services that are, that are.
Where?
In county operations.
They'd be in the general fund.
But that's the unincorporated.
Well, but it also serves, it also serves, it also serves, the health department serves all health services throughout the county, both the incorporated and unincorporated areas. It's a, it is a, the health function is not historically a city function, but a county.
What about sheriff's department?
Sheriff is a constitutional officer who is county-wide and has county-wide jurisdiction and.
Where's it paid out of?
The pay comes out of the general fund because the sheriff may operate as the chief law enforcement officer throughout the county, notwithstanding you have jurisdictional.
Marshals.
The county marshals again are county-wide and they.
Dog catchers.
Dog catchers. Dog catchers, I don't know what the line item is, but I would assume that that is in an unincorporated unless you had an IGA with the city.
Well, so they're saying that the parks come completely out of the point one six mills?
They did.
Do we know what that is countywide, what the point one six mills can, how much that total amount is? So we can corroborate. It's, it's ten million dollars. The parks are spending fifteen million dollars on parks?
Well, the county's budget, the county's budget itself is.
Hey, what is the county budget for parks? And what does that point one six equal?
What they shared with us was their budget or their costs associated with all the parks that are now inside the city limits. And that was over seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And I know that's different, bigger than what the.
I mean, the alternative is, and I, I, I understand where, where you're headed and Chris and I have had these conversations too. The alternative is, you know, the first, they'll shut the parks down.
Right, they will shut the parks down.
And if you can live with that, then that's, that's what.
Can the county live with that?
Exactly. I mean, that's, that's where the comments should be directed to, the concerns, the complaints or anything, you know.
Yeah, we're not complaining to y'all, just adding.
No, no, right. But, you know, the very first IGA meeting, when we informed them that we were not taking over the parks, they were very surprised because they had not anticipated that they, that they were going to do that. But in, in conjunction with that, they were not planning to bill also. There, there was no intent on their part. They were going to continue, you know, subsidizing, supplying, funding these parks. So they were already ready to take that off of their, their rider on the tax bill. So in that first meeting and that conversation, it was, okay, well, we, we need to go out and hire camp counselors. We've got to get our lifeguards. We have to be sure the pools are open and we need to continue the program of maintaining the parks. So that's.
That's another issue. I've had all these services that are providing the parks in Brookhaven that we never see. You know, they're just, it's just, I know they have lifeguards and they gave the short trip to Briarwood at least on lifeguards last summer. I mean, so they're saying all these things that they're providing. I just don't, you know, that's been one of the main issues that they haven't been providing services. I know all the leagues take over all, most of the maintenance at the, and I asked again the other day to open the day. The county doesn't do anything but give them some sand or, you know, every once in a while and pick up the garbage. And that, they don't do a very good job of that.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think it boils down to the cost of litigation as opposed to the cost of pandas. And with thirty-day out, if we can find a better way to do this, let's find a better.
If we have a thirty-day out, that's important enough. All right? Okay. We didn't have that, right?
That's, that's our understanding. We don't have the IGA yet from the county.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's a shocker. I think it's certainly disappointing. I'd like, you know, it's somewhere enough to explain to the citizens of Brookhaven.
But. The county says, we pay this or we shut your parks down. That's what they're, that's what they're saying.
Correct.
You pay us, we'll shut you down.
And you know who the complaint is going to come to.
Exactly.
Well, the other option is, is they continue running and then they sue us for the seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars under the charter and say that we, we are required to pay for the actual cost if they have a continuation.
But they didn't even tell us the actual cost, really, in reality.
I understand. I'm in the middle of that litigation in several jurisdictions. But that, that is, that, that becomes hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation.
Did anybody in the audience come up with a budget number? Did you?
It is eight point seven three eight million countywide.
Is what they're told their budget for parks?
Approved two thousand thirteen.
So I wonder what the point one six.
Yes, for your residents, your population.
No, eight one, we're told countywide for parks, eight one seven three million dollars.
Right.
And the point one six?
Countywide.
Countywide. I wonder what point one six, so that, if, if that figure matches with the county's budget, that's the only thing I want.
Yeah.
Well, the point one six would be the sum of property taxes collected and host tax credits allocated to that special service district.
Right.
Then in addition to that, you would have other revenues such as program fees and registration fees and such. So the eight million figure that I just heard, that would be just the point one. So the eight million figure that, that I just heard, that would be just the point one six there are.
Well, you get my question, is, is what they're saying is, you know, the, the, the point one six is what we used to pay for parks, and then this host figure, really how much is it overall, and how, how we.
I think one of the other problems with using military rates is that, I think that military rates have, have been shown to be used as a way just to sort of pony.
They don't reflect costs.
Yeah, they don't reflect costs, they're just sort of a balancing of what to bill, so that you don't know.
And one of the discussions during the meetings where, when it went from the seven hundred and started going down, was the fact that they were just billing us for the cost and not offsetting any program revenues that they were getting, and that's when, that's when you started seeing the numbers dropping closer to where we're at at this point.
Alright, anything else on that?
Well, by the way, they really want to do.
Well, I don't think they have an option.
Let's keep that on the table, that comment, please.
Sure, uh, police is real simple, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month.
So let's get back to, they really want this, don't they? Can we, that's, that's twenty-five thousand over my threshold, personally, I was gonna have many times, why don't we try to leverage what they really want, and get this one a little down?
All right, wait, you want me to talk about mine with mine or yours?
No, uh, you know, you can talk about it here if you want, or we can talk about it later, I don't care.
Well, it's, it's up for, it's up for approval tonight, and, uh, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, it was about.
It was over eight hundred thousand to begin with.
Yeah, we all know that was a shuttle for balance, to get us a bit of attention.
Well, you know, the, the, the five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is about twenty-five thousand dollars under what we thought we were gonna be able to get.
Well, depends whose perspective, it's twenty-five over mine.
I understand, but, yeah, I would, I would suggest to you that it's not worth, in fact, over twenty-five thousand dollars, because we're gonna have a police department up as fast as we possibly can, and the, the reality of this number is that it's a number. Is, it is, you know, it, it was a number of what we can afford and what, what they can, what they can, they can deal with. The, what, what you're, what's problematic when you look at the politic on their side is that you're, you're gonna have a, you're, the number of eight hundred thousand is a number that's generated out of the police department. And so you have a political dynamic that comes from the police department on their needs to deliver services, uh, in the area. And so the, what, what has had to happen from the executive branch over there is they've had to internally deal with their police department to say, you're just gonna have to suck it up, these are the numbers that we have, and this is where we've gotten to. And, and that's how the resolution actually came to a number, you know, and, and if, if that's where it got to, that they could, you know, you know, their bottom number start when we got to where our top number, their bottom number was, we were, we were at, we were at four fifty, and they were at six hundred, and those were our tops and our bottoms, and we split the difference, and that's how you got to five twenty-five on us.
Curious why they paid monthly, not able to return the.
Well, we have the opportunity, we have an opportunity to, to.
Finance.
Finance and, and pay what we can this year, and we've already discussed, uh.
That's what's spelled out in the agreement, the agreement requires monthly payments, and they can, and they can shut us down if we don't pay in thirty-three days.
No, well, there was the carrying charge that would be assigned, which we did not pay.
No, I, I don't, I don't, legally, they simply refuse to provide service.
Well, the agreement's written so that they can shut us down after, you know, they, they can say after thirty-three days, if, if you're not, if you're unpaid, they can quit providing.
Now, I'll defer to bill as to what the specific language was, but the conversation was any payments that you do not pay within a thirty day period of being billed would carry a point two percent, uh, monthly fee, which equates to two point four percent annual.
One second, do y'all need to be here anymore? Well, y'all can, I mean, unless you have to be here tonight, I don't know, I don't think that it is.
No.
I'm trying to tell you.
Now that we're almost done.
I don't, you know, I don't wanna make you stay if you don't have to stay. Sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So that was provision, and the rationale, that was actually something that we had requested initially, uh, when the number first came out, based on what we were initially hoping to have for the, the IGA to the county. We had talked in our budget, we had the two and a quarter, and we were trying to see, okay.
One second, I'm sorry, do they have to make that change in the thing we're voting on tonight?
They don't, I mean, you can, you can amend the, the ordinance and approve them.
You got language forward on that?
We will.
Okay, great, sorry, go ahead, sorry, just wanna make sure.
Sorry, I was answering this question. So we, we wanted to try, you know, based on conversations that you and I've had, as far as cash flow and tax rates and everything else involved, uh, wanted to try to make sure that we had as much flexibility as possible. They have asked that we not defer all of it, uh, and we have no intentions of doing so, it's their expectation of once executed that we would make good, at least on what's happened in the past, and then once they start billing, we would pay going forward, and it was, it's kind of a, an understanding and a head nod that we're really only talking about deferring that last month's six payment. Now, if that didn't get from the conversation into the legal document, if that didn't get translated properly, I'll, again, I'll defer to bill, but that was our verbal understanding at the time of the meeting.
Well, I mean, if we pass the.
We will add that language in there.
And, and we can pass it, what's the, the agreement, and I can, I, I won't sign until it's, that language is in there, is that how that can work?
We can do that, and, and there were, I don't, we hadn't spoken to the county on that, of course, the understanding was that we were only gonna not pay the last month, because we're gonna contribute to saving five hundred something thousand dollars for capital expenses, and if the last month, if we don't pay that, there was a, it was a billing within thirty days, and then another thirty days.
I remember, I think it was like fifteen days after the month end, and then another thirty. So we're probably August fifteenth until we pay it, is.
And so the, the, the reality, the real answer is that you don't have to have that language, because we, it's only the last month that we wouldn't pay under what we had discussed, and, and the services are already over, and there wouldn't be a thirty, a need for another thirty day notice to cure. But I understand if you, if you wish for us to put that extra language in, we'll certainly, we can certainly do that.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if, if state law allows us to pay over time, let's take advantage of that.
Well, state law allows us to pay over time if they continue to give us services, uh, that's what, that, when they're, when they're, they're, they are charging us at an actual cost basis, what we've done alternatively to that actual cost basis is to come into an intergovernmental agreement for services, and a service delivery that's outside the framework of the charter and has a number that we've made a determination is our cost on a monthly basis, which is, which may or may not have a rational relationship to the services that are provided. And that is an attempt to, number one, avoid litigation, and number two, to, 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 to avoid litigation, because you're just not gonna be able to measure accurately those, what's delivered and what's not.
Alright, real quick, um, Susan, do you wanna get those sandwiches in here or something, so we, I don't wanna be eaten during the council meeting, um, if that's how technically anybody else, okay, Susan?
Yes.
I mean, real quick, more eat.
Yes.
Alright, and, um, two things, Dunwoody paid four hundred thousand dollars, correct, a month?
Dunwoody paid four fifty, and, and that's kinda how I came to say, yeah, this is a sensible number. Brookhaven's larger, Brookhaven has more people, you could argue Brookhaven has more crime pockets to deal with, so the service calls should be more than what's happened.
Okay.
Uh, plus you've got a, a good four-year inflationary factor as well, so that is how I kinda got from the four fifty to the five hundred and the five twenty-five, where it, the, the number was at least explainable based on past hits.
Um, I think I might be sure to, to have fewer officers now than we have to, but the only cap that I would play that, and then the second thing is, um, I don't wanna call it odd advice, but, you know, I've been getting a lot of emails and phone calls about. Oh, yeah, particularly, riding fine in, in certain areas, and, um, more so than I would have heard about previously in some areas. Is there any way we can have a, um, a checkup or an audible liaison here from the county to, and this is my request for you, where we have a way, if we have a problem, we can go, somebody's in the city hall, hey, this is.
We asked for that already, and that's Major Ellison.
And he gonna be here?
Tonight, tonight we're anticipating the chiefs are gonna be here, I, I spoke with Major Ellison this afternoon, he said that they plan to come, and, and they were gonna, they were gonna tell him that he needed to be here, so we're hopeful that they will be here unless something happens.
Okay, so, what about going forward, once we?
The major, the major, the, the chief commander is the liaison to the city.
And what about, so where will they be, will they be, will they have a little office form here?
Well, I, what I recall from the conversation is that Snyder even suggested that every month, that the.
Come to be.
The major would be at the meeting to present a report to council.
Every month or every two weeks?
Every month.
I, we were told it, Snyder said, you know, every month, I, I think the, the understanding was the frequency that was, would be needed. You, you may hear a couple reports, or not even one, a July report, so.
I wanna, I need to, I mean, if we're gonna be paying this, and I understand we need to, I wanna make sure there's some accountability on what we're paying, that's a lot of money, and when we have residents' concerns, I don't want to go through some bureaucracy to get this in my, communicate our residents' concerns to the cap league, I want him to write mine, or somebody here that's accountable comes in and checks in months a week, or an email address, or something that we know will, um, I don't wanna tell this to you, but, but this is what, um, any comments on that?
We will.
I agree.
I'd love, I'd love to see it fly my line of accounting, but I just don't know how, where the government's gonna do it.
You know, if we have to Major Ellison once a month, maybe get somebody like Officer Olson in for the second, J D, Olson, like, for the second meeting, just to make sure we have accountability and somebody to report to, as his assistant.
Well, I wanna make sure we're, we're talking about accountability on performance, not dollars, 'cause once we execute IGA, we're not talking about dollars anymore.
Performance, okay, sorry, so, any comment, they work over there?
Historically, and I, and I, and we're gonna get, we're gonna get the level of service that we're gonna get. You are not gonna have that much input in there, you just aren't, you, you will have an opportunity to, to give input back to the major, but you, the input that you give back does not have the voice of authority that of the county commissioner, who is their, their boss.
Suppose we sign this agreement, and next month, we are, it's getting just unbearable, and we're, you know, if, where are the police, where are the police, I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but what kind of recourse do we have?
You have, you have very little, you have very little recourse, but you, but here's the thing, Dunwoody, if you don't sign it, and you, and you stay under the charter, you have that same amount of recourse, and you have not limited your liability, and you're looking at them coming after you for about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars a month at the end of the, at the end of two thousand.
Is Twilight Rico?
It's, it's a matter of, it's a, it's a matter of understanding the pains and pressures of the change of software.
Right.
And, and that's just where we are, so we, 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 we try to minimize the dollar amount and, and maximize the positive reinforcement, that we understand that the police are doing the best that they can, and keep them going in that direction.
Good job getting that up.
I guess, yeah. I guess the flip side, are we gonna request, are we gonna require our chief of police to provide the same level of reporting on monthly data?
Yeah, you bet, absolutely. Bet, what do you think?
I've always wanted all money on our city's website.
Well, you can require the city manager to give you that.
That's right.
Recording, but the police chief does not work for the mayor and council, they work for the manager, and in one place that.
Like the question.
People, people obviously get in trouble is if they, you think that they work for you, they do not, there is an autonomy of police officers that you cannot violate, and.
Let me ask one question about, about this, uh.
You're on track, right?
Yes.
Carryover financing, so, so if, is there any strategy to give us financial flexibility for our startup year, to be able to carry over a large portion of the IGA payments to next year? Is, I mean, more than one month, is that a possibility there?
From what I understood, the, the, the general understanding was one to two months, but they were thinking we would only do just one month, they're, they're expecting that for their own cash flow purposes.
Sure.
They're, they're going back thinking that we're doing at most one month, but I believe the conversation was in one or two, if I remember correctly.
Well, that's right, I would like that legal language can be considered, if it, if it gives us more flexibility in sort of, for, for pay.
It does give you more flexibility for, for two thousand thirteen, but I would caution you to, to not think that you're not gonna have just as many demands and concerns as two thousand fourteen, if you defer a million dollars, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna have people pointing roads paid and everything else going on in fourteen, and it, it only delays how soon you get up to full speed.
So the, the payment, the full payment that they would be expecting would be like the first three months of this year, for services ready?
Yeah, the, the first payment would be that.
And then what I also heard is that the one month delay would be most likely August, so they're anticipating the July cessation of.
No, no, uh, June thirty cuts off, they bill us on July fifteenth, you have thirty days to pay, so that puts us at August fifteenth, that's when the clock starts ticking on interest. If we wait six months, we're looking at about one point two percent or six grand in interest.
We tried to save the half a million dollars for purposes of police cars and those kinds of equipment pieces that we knew we had capital expense on.
That's what I'm thinking too, like, alright, it sounds like we're, you'll do a good job negotiating again, number tonight will be in five twenty-five.
Yes, and then what I'm gonna ask you to do, since it's not printed up on the agenda with a number in it, if you take it out of the.
Yes, thank you.
And, and amend it to add in the five twenty-five, and the start date will be January first, two thousand thirteen, and your back will be June the.
Yeah, that's good.
We've got J D here for this.
Welcome to the municipal court. I will, I will start off with, as we've been talking about spending money, I'll do a quick update on how much money we did save in this report, uh, we've saved about eight to ten grand on what we see so far, that's about twenty, anywhere, if I do rough math, it's anywhere from twenty-six to thirty-four people's tax bills for the city, so they've done a lot of good work on that. Our ROI number is in the connectivity department at the GBI, so it's being set up. Danika Williams, who is our court clerk slash court administrator, is doing all the follow-up. We had a large transition meeting with Bill Riley, the judges, the court staff, uh, we've had the police involved, so we've transitioned the project fully to the court staff, and they're doing all the follow-up, uh, after that. I provided a document to the city manager, the city attorney, mayor, and a few others that kinda outlined doing what's happened and all the things that are transitioned will belong to court staff. The reason we did that is that we broke up the project into three phases, so phase one was obviously startup, phase two was transition, and then phase, phase three was beginning operations, and the transitional phases, kind of very area, some was involved in startup, and some involved court staff, and it all began in operations of court staff's responsibility. Included in court staff, we do have some city council staff, we saw one of them walk out, J D Drysdale handling facilities here, obviously, our city manager is still a vested stakeholder in the court itself, uh, as well as the court, uh, the court clerks, those individuals, judges, solicitors, those things.
In the, in the police IGA, we're paying, um, off-duty service or off-duty, uh, prices for police officers who need to show up for court days, does that come out of court, or does that come out of police, or where, where's that funding? And I don't know what the number's gonna be.
It'll come out of, it'll come out of courts for subpoenas.
Okay.
We've met with the police, and we're, we've, we've worked toward timing out all of, all of the time for police services. The process that we're doing here is not like the court's book, where all the police officers show up for every case, and it's their day, we're running an arraignment process, we're probably eighty-five to ninety percent. We're running an arraignment process. We're probably eighty-five to ninety percent of all the cases will be resolved without a police officer necessary to come for a subpoena and only, and then we're only gonna run, right now, we're only gonna run court every two months of trial case, I think.
Trial cases, uh, his trial once every two months on a Wednesday.
So we're only gonna run that every two months, uh, so we'll probably only have basically one to two days altogether that we'll use those for subpoenas.
Who, who provides security at recourse court at Cap County? I think it's, I think they're just Cap County police there. I don't, I don't know if it's the sheriff.
Sheriff of most of the courthouse security, aren't there the ones that-
They have private people at the, at the metal detector, but, uh, but I think I see blue shirts, dark blue shirts in the courtroom. I'm gonna check into that because that should be a part of our police service. 'Cause we're taking all this, all those, all those cases, but they're not gonna have to provide security for those to bring them here. We need to have some, maybe they have the sheriff's department to help with it.
They don't provide services for any other municipality.
Well, I wouldn't be the first to ask.
Certainly can ask, but I think we better have another option going before-
All right. Want to check into it?
What we're working on right now is, uh, uh, what the court staff's working on in security is, we, under our contract, we have to have one off, one off-duty police officer here to monitor the parking lot and what we're looking at is the potential for having two off-duties and using them as transport officers also until such time as we have transport, because there are a number of, that right now, all we're gonna be able to do until we have transport is summons cases, which means we can't take the D U Is, we can't take the suspended licenses, we can't take the no license cases, uh, and-
One more question on that then. The only has a transport service.
Well, we have a, an employee-
Right.
That I don't think's been hired yet, but, and then we have a paddy wagon.
Right, that takes them down. Can we look into paying for that service rather than having to wait and start from?
We could certainly, well, we, we can certainly do that. But we're, the other piece that we have to work through and that the, uh, that the court services department is working on right now is that when you have a, when you have an in custody process, you have to have your four, you have to have your, uh, your first appearance for your hour hearing, uh, and seventy-two hour hearing. And so we're working, we're working through that process to see where, where we can go ahead and have, have our seventy-two hour process over at, uh, over at Cap County. Because that's the other issue about, about booking, when you don't have your own, you know, we're, we're fortunate that, that we have the use of the Cap County jail because, uh, the in custody portion is so expensive. And so we have that opportunity, but what we have to do and just having to resolve at this point in time is how are we gonna do the first appearance hearings uh, to, to those and set the, set the bond and, and then the transport. It's a historical matter, Don Mayor, the, the transport is, uh, as time goes on, is, is almost always, I would say ninety-nine percent of the time in, in Dunlawn, which I'm familiar with because we do that too, they're probationers. The people that are actually being held that don't bond out are probationers. So I think that when, when we resolve our, uh, when we, when we resolve our seventy-two hour hearings, then the transport, the transportation's gonna be negligible.
I know, I just know that Dunwoy used to have their own police do it and they found a way to save money by doing this employee that does, did the man.
Well, it, it, it wasn't as much of a cost-saving measure as it is keeping our officers on the street.
So, and in turn, that saves costs.
Yeah, we were, we were looking at, it's, you know, it wasn't untypical to have an hour and a half turnaround to take one person.
Right.
Uh, whereas now we can have a civilian, put him in a truck, take him down there, and let him come back, um, and-
So I'm saying, we got a, if a car or a van's going from the perimeter to the jail, I'd like to see if we can get on that ride, ride share, carpool.
Well, if you just, I mean, timing, I mean, if you just happen to have someone up, we just arrested at the same time, Dunwoy just arrested, and you stop by on your way down.
The green edition.
Yeah, just, you know, certainly in, in those circumstances, okay, I'll meet you at the, you divert a diamond and we'll, you know, we'll take one shuttle down there. Other than that, I don't know. I just, you'd have, one chief would have to talk to the other and see what availability is and-
I'm not gonna be throwing a lot of crazy ideas like this, just to see if it, whatever works.
What we have done is, prior to, uh, prior to the transition, we did pull all the information related to security, armed guards, off-duty officers, so the court staff can figure out the best way to manage the internal coordination.
All right, thank you. You're a great update, great job, J D. Can we go over a little bit of the budget? You, just to, real quick, you changed some of the revenue projections, um, upright?
Yes, some, some of the revenue projections have been changed for, uh, the following reasons. One, we negotiated an, a agreement with Georgia Power where they would pay twenty-five percent of the estimated annual amount to us. I don't know if that meant January, February, March, and then we cut it off and whatever would have been at that time they'll pay us or if they're actually estimating a full year and paying it for that, whatever it ends up being. We did put a value in there. It's still an estimate at this point. We haven't heard any number from Georgia Power as to what they anticipate it being. And I've, I've been a little, well, I will say a little, I've, I've been conservative off of the feasibility study number just to make sure we don't anticipate something that's not gonna be there. Uh, the other thing that's, was added to the revenue section was the financing of some of the, the capital expenditures that we were gonna have. Uh, I looked at some of the, the big software applications as well as like this, this, this facility and the build-out, the city hall and the build-out, et cetera, and got that number incorporated into the budget. And the other thing is that we reduced the property tax estimate to fall in line with what the feasibility report, the most recent feasibility report was showing, uh, based on what was pointed out to us after the initial budget was released. So those, those were the, the revenue numbers and I, I know it seems weird, governmental accounting in some instances it is, but in governmental accounting, a loan is revenue. And, you know, private sector, loan is debt, uh, and it's, and it is debt. You do have to pay it back, but when you pay it back, it's an expense. So here, when we're borrowing the funds, we do need to show it as a revenue line, even though it's not technical revenue. The same revenue that most people would expect.
Does it, does any of these figures have the police or parks I G A. in them? What would, what would be paying off in proportion to those?
On the expense, uh, for the departmental expenditures, you'll see the police, uh, line. It does have that, uh, three million figure in there.
Three point one five.
Right.
That's the five, six months of five hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, I believe that is all six months.
And even though we might defer some of that to next year, it's still gotta be put in this year's?
Well, it, it doesn't, and the option to defer, uh, yes, that is all six months, is something that we can choose to do now or at a later date. The budget that I presented to you is based on expenses that we anticipate having. And at any point in time, you can always amend the budget to say, okay, we're not gonna pay that cash out this year. We're gonna wait until next year, uh, which you have is a budget that's set on a cash basis rather than an accrual basis. But you can certainly do that, uh, for example, when you're setting the millage rate, you can look at cash projections rather than, uh, accrual basis of accounting. You know, that's five hundred thousand dollars that doesn't have to go into your millage rate calculation. So all, all that's in place. It doesn't include anything, uh, for a parks I G A. Today is actually the, the first day I've heard of a, an agreed upon number. I know there was some discussions and I understood there was an, an understanding, but I, you know, it was the first hard numbers. That number's not in there, uh, which oddly enough, it just about offsets the other five hundred that we're looking at. So, uh, you know, if we, if we have the option of-
We're also gonna pay that over time.
Well, and then, you know, if we have the ability to pay just the hundred thousand and defer the, the rest, then certainly that, again, that gives you that flexibility to kinda put that off into a subsequent year, which again, gives less pressure on the millage rate.
Which, you know, we wanna work that down. Obviously, we're gonna talk to you about that.
Right, absolutely.
The three point three five mill is what, is just what our worst-case scenario for millage rate. And I want to, and we've spoken about this, come off that millage rate, 'cause I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna start with the maximum rate. I think it's hard to ever come off of, like, if you started at the highest, it's hard to ever come off of it, so, um, I think we need to sharpen our fists more and I want the staff to sharpen their fists. And, um, just be prepared to know that we wanna, whenever the, the Cap County projections were, they shift that millage rate back from the, how the, what they did last year with the shenanigans with the police number. We wanna prepare this summer to adjust our millage rate down wherever possible.
Absolutely, and in any kind you set, set a budget, and I, and I know I've said this before, but it's always about establishing priorities. What's the balance between having an appropriate level of taxes that could be paid and an appropriate level of services to be delivered? And you, you find where that balance is. Now, I will say that when you go to the public, you can say, all right, I don't want the millage rate to increase at all, but you better not cut police. And you may go to a different neighborhood and say, I don't care, we're fine, we're perfectly safe, we only need two officers in the entire city, but you better not cut parks. I mean, everybody's gonna have their own individual preference and obviously you, you have the benefit of citywide, what's in our best interest. You also have the benefit of having all the facts in front of you, and when you have that information, then accordingly you make a decision as to what the appropriate rate needs to be. And it, it's, sometimes it's a popular decision and sometimes it's not, uh, but that's why y'all get paid the big bucks.
Will you explain the, uh, the one thing I didn't realize before you mentioned, that, that the car tag, that, that the three point three five, was this a small, ten percent tax cut on car tags?
I don't, I haven't crunched the exact numbers, but the host credit only applies to real estate taxes for homeowners. Uh, anybody who has a vehicle would have been paying the, the higher four point one three, one one, one eight?
This is the ad valorem tag?
Yes. Uh, so they would still be paying that, that higher rate. There is no host credit for your, your car tags. Now, they're, now, instead of that higher figure, they're gonna, they're gonna be paying whatever the millage rate is set by council and let's, you know, just keep nice round numbers and say it's three mil. Uh, they would then pay, instead of paying the four point one, they would pay, last year they would then, they'll pay the three number this year. Now, that doesn't mean twenty percent decrease. It's only a, uh, it would only be a twenty-five percent decrease on that one portion of the car tag.
But, but doesn't, does that go away over time as the, as the state, uh, uh, spot percentage kick in?
As, as you buy new cars, yes, and that, and-
That's all the dealership cars.
That's all cars.
It's all, it's all-
It's a big thing, 'cause he's never gonna buy the car.
Our car.
Well, it's all in the dealership though.
Yeah, it, it's personal sales as well.
It's casual sales.
And it's out of state too. I mean, if you rent a vehicle from out of state, that is, so, uh, it applies to all that. That actually, you know, to sidetrack just a little bit, there should be a slight bump in what cities get in the first two to three years and then gradually it, it decreases, uh, to a little bit less than what the cities would get. That's been G M A.'s analysis that they've come out and said on that.
Will you crunch those numbers for us, let us know what, what it, and actually what it would be?
Yeah, I can pull a generic Chevy pickup and see what it would come to.
But when the, when the first, when the new car is registered, five percent is paid, it's one-time fee?
Uh, it's seven or six and a half this year, bumped up to seven, uh, and it's one-time fee. You still have your tax fee, but the ad valorem portion does go away.
Right, so that multiple dollar one goes down because that repeated ad valorem taxes.
That is correct.
That's what it was.
Depends on how long you keep your car. People that cycle through cars a lot, they're gonna, they'll, they'll pay more.
You buy an older car, you have to keep for a second.
He's got a Fred Flintstone car.
And, and cars that depreciate faster, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna find that you pay a little bit more, 'cause, let's take a Honda and a Ford. Honda doesn't appreciate as fast, so ad valorem gradually goes down, whereas a Ford drops off a little bit more, a little bit faster. People that have Fords have typically paid less in car tags. So you, you'll, you'll see a, a dynamic change, but it's such a small part of the overall decision process. I would say people are more concerned with cup holders than they are how much that seven percent tax is gonna be.
Chris, let me just kinda review the, the, the big numbers that changed in the budget. I mean, we went from fifteen point seven in revenues to sixteen point four. And you mentioned the, uh, like you also reduced the, uh, real property tax estimate from, uh, six million down to five million.
Correct.
Okay.
That six million to five million was, uh, immediately offset by the lease revenue, the loan revenue that we're getting from the capital equipment.
Okay, is that the one point three five that the capital lease proceeds for startup?
That's correct.
And then the franchise fee went from nine hundred thousand to one, one point three mil.
That was the addition of the Georgia Power.
So that's an additional four hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's what I've estimated. That comes to one point six million on an annualized basis and I'm hoping that's a conservative number to use. It is less than what the C B I. studied, uh, but if there's, in my opinion, if there's a number where they overestimate it, it's that line item. I don't think Georgia Power's gonna be the two point four that they best price.
And then you bumped up the, uh, the reserve for the police services from two point two five million to three point one five. Is that reflect-
That's the I G A.
That is the I G A, okay.
For all six months.
But the, the contingency drop down was to million? Contingency for future-
From four point one to three point nine.
Yeah.
Four point one, okay.
It was four mil, four, four ones.
Yeah, in, in the future, it'd be nice if they did have, both, both, uh, both wire items on there, just so we could see if we don't wanna change these.
Oh, the previous.
Previous, yeah, this one. Helps, helps no way to shift, so I can say the third.
All right, um, we'll solve this one.
Yeah, we can start doing that with this one now. Logistically, uh, we're having a public hearing tonight. We're not adopting the budget tonight. So you'll simply, you know, either remove or not take a vote on this one. And if there are any more changes that take place, well, it sounds like there will be, but whatever changes do take place. We'll have a, as presented, February, as presented, March, twelve, uh, in January, March, so, uh, we'll, we'll include all three of those columns for you. That's not a problem at all.
It's good, I know it's, I can imagine this process could go on all year, going through. It's a good, it's a good budget.
Now, Ms. Ms. Ware, if you'd like to talk about, I can probably do so in a short five-minute snapshot.
A what?
If you wanted to still talk about the benefits, I can probably do so in about a five-minute snapshot.
Well, I've actually talked to Chris. I mean, uh, but we're not gonna vote on it tonight.
I'd prefer to do it, but-
Our city manager wanted to go ahead and get them, or project. Well, I mean, if you, if you have, wanna take the time and, and hear the presentation and you feel comfortable, we could move forward with it, or we could wait.
What do you want, what do y'all wanna do?
Well, I, I reviewed it with both regulars, so I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, pretty conversant with it. It's a pretty rich package, but it's actually absolutely identical to Dunlawn's.
Right.
So I mean, if you wanna hear a quick presentation, it might be something we could go ahead with, or we could, we can delay it.
Is there a problem with, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I guess I'd like to see a, a comparison to Allen Dunlawn, you know, to see what some of the other comparable cities are.
Yeah, and, and we've done that, we've provided that. The, the only urgency is I know we're wanting a police chief and one of the things he's gonna be concerned with is how do I recruit crime staff?
Next, next, next meeting.
Yeah.
Before you go?
Yes.
One more thing, I'm back to the I G As. On the waste I G A., they're insisting that we make our decision on one, one or two pickups by the end of March because they're doing billings. They're working on the billings for next year, so that, they're asking you to do that by the end of March. We tried to push them back a month and then we tried to push them back two weeks.
Have they announced that that's what they're doing? I thought there was just a study committee on it.
This is, this is where they are in their I G A. with us, but they would, they would be- This is, this is where they are in their IGA with us, but they would, they would be...
The county's gonna make their decision, we asked last week, and they have...
How do we make our decision?
They can't do the billing for the county till...
Right.
All I can tell you is that's what's in that, in the IGA that you'll be voting on tonight.
Being insured.